...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, endowed with individual liberty and justice.
Welcome, everybody. The meeting's ordered at six o'clock. I think our agenda is set. We'll move into presentations. I think we've got Jeff here tonight.
Mr. Fisk, will you be able to bring your...
Here is Rob. Where's Rob? How does that gonna work? Is that gonna work good here?
I'll keep this quick. Thanks for the board to have me. Basically, what I want to do is go over a policy that Section 5 is fully adopting. New York State Public High School Athletic Association has always allowed for student athletes to have dual participation in high school athletics. Section 5 has been one of three sections that hasn't fully grasped onto that. Basically, what it allows is for student athletes in a particular sport season to play two sports. Example, this was really put into place probably fifteen or twenty years ago for the girl soccer player that was really good that could kick a ball that ended up kicking for her football team on a Friday night. It has seen different things over the years, and Section 5 this year really has said, "We're one of only three sections throughout New York State that doesn't allow it. We're gonna put our stamp on it." And it is up to basically each league and then each school within that league to approve it. So, our league approved it. So, what basically we need, or the Board of Education here at Oldfield has to do is basically sign off on it. I know Mr. Fisk has passed along basically the contract that many of our schools and the league are using. But in essence, basically what it'll be is if a student athlete desires to do this, they would sign a contract, their parents would sign off on it, both coaches that would be affected would sign off on it, declaring a primary sport and a secondary sport. So, example, use my daughter as let's say an example. So, she plays soccer in the fall. Her secondary sport, let's say, is cross-country. So, basically what it would do is she's a soccer player first. When she can, she can go run in cross-country meets. It basically talks in that contract of basically the parameters. So, to be eligible, all they would really have to do is meet the practice requirements, which is basically six practices for each of the particular sports. So, let's say that she's got a Friday night soccer game. She plays in the soccer game Saturday afternoon, or Saturday she's got, even if she did have practice, but let's say she's got no soccer practice. Coach Bueller says, "Hey, Kelsey, come on and run on the cross-country team. She can go run." That's kind of it in a nutshell. I envision, do I think a lot of kids are gonna take advantages? I don't. I think some might. I think the discussion we've had in the league is, let's say we've got the kid that's a baseball player in the spring, but also plays golf on the beginning, and is pretty good at golf, and he could go, or she could go play golf with the golf team. So, basically, the league has approved it. Section 5 has kind of given the green light to do it. Like I said, we're one of only three out of the eleven sections in the state that currently doesn't fully take advantage of it. So, that's, that contract that you saw that I passed along to Mr. Fisk is basically just kind of says how this would play out if, in fact, a student athlete and their parents wanted to kind of put down this rope.
Any questions?
I have a lot of questions myself, so like, go fire away.
Are we approving this? Or is this something we can say, "Sorry, you passed because maybe there's..." That's why, is the reason why we don't...
You can. I know in talking with the other athletic directors in the Genesee region, they anticipate their boards adopting it. They think it's a good thing, especially in smaller schools where numbers can sometimes be an issue trying to just get a number. And I'll use, Mr. Bueller's here, so I'll use cross-country as an example. Girls, a few years ago, he was struggling to get seven girls out there to kind of make, you know, to put a full team out there. In this scenario, he could get a couple of kids and maybe encourage them to run and help, basically help those other kids to have competed with a complete team. So, I think a lot of athletic directors think that this would be a way to perhaps keep smaller number teams going a little bit until maybe numbers change. It used to be the way it was way back when. In speaking with a couple of Hades, they said, "Our four-by-one relay team was made up of all baseball guys forty years ago that ran track when sport seasons were a little different than they are now." So, that's the thinking on that.
Jeff, do you think... Do you think specifically... I mean, golf and cross-country, okay, but football and golf, soccer and cross-country?
If you're asking me personally what I have concerns potentially, there's, and this is just my personal opinion, maybe because I'm the oldest one in that room, usually when we have our meetings, that there's gonna be very, there's really no way to monitor what happens. So, let's say a boy goes and plays in a soccer game at 4:30. He could theoretically have his parents drive him to the football game at 7:00 and suit up for a book. I mean, that's doable. So, did he get hit in the head playing soccer? Did, you know, those types of things? I don't think honestly you'll see very many kids play two quote-unquote "team" sports, like a soccer-football thing, unless the kid's the kicker. I don't see that happening. I think just physically it's too demanding. And I also think that, I don't think this will be rampant. I think student athletes that are dedicated to whatever sport they're doing in that season will stay dedicated to that, I think. But I envision those individual sports, you know, and there was an example that was thrown to me. There's a student athlete in a neighboring school district, really good golfer, but with a little work, he'd probably go help the track team and the shot miss. You know, and that's not gonna, he's not taking really any of the spot. He's just out there, he can contribute that way. It's kind of an individual skill. So, you know, those are the types of things I think we'll see. I just think from a time constraint, I think kids won't, most of them won't find the time to be able to do. And quite honestly, going to two sets of practices and trying to play two sets of games, I think it's gonna be difficult. So, I don't think it'll happen much, but we're basically just saying, if a student athlete and their parents wanted to allow that to happen, then we're open to that.
Jeff, you said one in three districts. Were one in three...
We were one of three sections in the state. Yeah, so it was, I think it was us, Section 3, which was Syracuse area, and then Section 11. Section 6 has been doing it forever, and they have very little regulations, and their executive director from Section 6 talked to our, or talked to the Attica A.D., who they're good friends, and he goes, "We've never had a problem. We just kind of let kids do it." And maybe I'm overthinking it, but I have some concerns with some of that stuff. My biggest thing as a coach would be, you know, I've got my team, I'm practicing three to five, and I'm missing one of my players because she's in the swimming pool swinging in a meet. She's not in my practice. So, you know, from that perspective, as a coach of a team sport, like, could that be a problem? Sure. But, you know, and there's, you know, that's certainly something that I would relay to my coaches, and we would have that all worked out. They already kind of know about it. They had a meeting back at the beginning of June, and I said this was potentially coming down the pipe, and let them know how that might play out. But I don't think it'll be rampant, quite honestly. I just think there's not enough time in the day for a lot of these kids.
But like, to your recollection, definitely we've seen three sport athletes. To your recollection, probably two sport athletes name on the top of your head right now, like for... Well, yeah, yeah, right, but Barry, they're... Deion Sanders, but other than that, like, they're...
Inside the same season, yeah. I, no, I mean, I think of, you know, something that we have here, you know, we have a couple, you know, I'm thinking of some female athletes, could they play softball and then go run the four-by-one for coaches? Absolutely. I mean, they're, you know, absolutely.
But how could they handle the practice?
Right. The practices would be tough.
Well, they have to have six, right?
They have to have six, so that can happen in the preseason.
And couldn't Bueller say, "We're gonna do some..."
We go seven, six to eight or something.
Right. I'll be here at three in the morning.
Again, I don't think it'll happen very much, but the paperwork that you have in front of you basically is just what we would probably hand out to those prospective athletes that might say, "Hey, look, you know, this is something." And it's not anything that, you know, our coaches are gonna go out and advertise a whole lot. It's one of those things that if a parent wanted to, you know, fight it, they certainly can. It's out there. But it's just a matter of, this is, Section 5 is kind of saying, "Okay, we're fully kind of going with this and basically allowing the leagues and the school districts and those leagues to...
Any questions?
Can we say if the board is interested in pursuing this and moving forward with this? I can share with you other schools' policies on this. We actually have two more board meetings. Obviously, the fall sports are delayed through at least the 21st, so I could get that policy out to you in advance. We can discuss it at the August board meeting. You could have your first reading. You could have, you know, possibly if there aren't any more questions, you could approve it at the September 15th meeting in preparation for hopefully some fall, hopefully some fall sports.
Is it September 24th?
September 21st. Yes. But we have two more board meetings before then, so if you're interested, I did include
the contract in my last weekly update, but I can actually provide you, you know, a sample policy, and, you know, we can make edits to it, and if everybody's on board...
And the philosophy was, in talking with all the other athletic directors, was that we certainly wouldn't go forward with this without Board of Education approval because, you know, there certainly could be the potential where, you know, you've got two coaches and the kids split between two, and, you know, so you're a phone hunk, you're going, "Hey, what's going on with this?" And we wouldn't want you to be blindsided by a phone call on this dual participation thing. So, the recommendation from the Section 5's executive director was, get Board of Education approval, and then you can basically put forth whatever policy as a district you want to put forth with it. The contract or that language was just, some other schools are using it. That was actually stolen from somebody else that was doing it in another section, and it looked good, and we kind of tweaked it to fit our personal needs, but that would be something that, if a student athlete was going to go down this road, we certainly would want them to fill out with their parents and the coaches and sign off so everybody's kind of on the same page with that.
Jeff, do you, have you seen the different schools' policy on it?
Not, I have not.
So, is the policy more elaborate than the contract?
Not, not really. Yeah, you're probably not gonna see as far as like a, the contract itself kind of lays out, if, you know, and ultimately, at the end of the day, there may not be anybody in this room older than me that would know a student athlete was interested. You know, a parent's gonna, you know, a student athlete might come to me as a coach, or he is, you know, or Mr. Bueller would say, "Hey, Coach, I might be interested in doing this." And then it would come to me, and we would enact the paperwork. But it's just one of those things where I think, you know, in the event this happens, we want to have at least some language in there that would be somewhat clear-cut as far as, you know, the expectations level.
I don't foresee that policy being any more than a front page, you know, and then having, you know, a contract to supplement it.
Maybe a little guidance from you to say, "Hey, you're signing up for this. This is what it looks like, and you gotta be on board with this before we move forward." I'd like to see instead of just...
Absolutely. I mean, yeah, one of the things we would do if we had that would have a sit-down with the parents, the student athlete, and both coaches that would be involved in that. Absolutely. You know, just say, "Look, this is the expectation," just so, you know, we're clear as far as what's gonna happen here. But like I said, I think two-team sport, volleyball, soccer in the fall would be practically impossible. This would be more of the, you know, Saturday cross-country meet, or a golf, you know, match in the fall or in the spring, or some...
Tennis.
Tennis, maybe, or, you know, those types of things. More something where that second sport would be more of an individual sport where it would... Because let's face it, if you're not a team practice, it's over, you're not gonna know what to wanna, I mean, from a team perspective, you're not gonna know how to run plays or anything else. So, but this would be a student athlete who's got a particular skill set that might be able to transfer over, and again, maybe help a program that's got some low numbers kind of stay afloat until we know who's to turn around.
Will there be any academic benchmarks that they have to, I mean, more so? Because you got a kid who's in the middle of the road, and you give them a two, they might drastically get out of the table.
Absolutely. And I think that would have to get worked in, Jackie, with the school policy, academic policy, and what we would want to do there, you know, because absolutely, if they're spending more time in athletics, that's less time on their academics, and I think that's, there's some language in there about it that they have to be, you know, certainly doing well in those two things. And again, I think that's one of those things where the coaches and get involved and say, "Look, you know, your academics go first," and maybe that second sport's really drawing on you a little bit, so. But absolutely, I think it's gotta be a part of that, quite honestly.
Before we turn the loose, we're gonna talk about the SOAR later. Can we do that now?
Sure.
Just give some thoughts, and then the three of us, can you give our thoughts on how that works?
Sure. We, I guess we met as a SOAR committee a couple of weeks ago, with Alba's representation to basically discuss where we were headed for, you know, the 2021 athletics, you know, year. We are pretty much status quo from the sports that we're given, you know. Again, hopefully everything gets started in September. We will have, you know, basically everything we do in the fall, we combine the Elba football, soccer, volleyball, and cross-country. They have representation at each level. Cross-country numbers are a little bit lower, they've got a few kids. So, from a coaching perspective, the head coaches for football will be Elba people. We have a couple of assistants, still working on a couple more from Oldfield. Our coaches for soccer, the head coaches are, J.B. and varsity coaches are from Oldfield, the modified coaches from Elba, with a program assistant from Oldfield. Coach Bueller's got the cross-country kids, and the volleyball coaches are the same, Coach Kramer, Coach Costa, and Coach Kisek, which are all Oldfield employees, will be the volleyball coaches. Same thing for the winter. Basically, we don't combine. We've taken swimmers in the past, but that doesn't look like they'll have any this year. And then the spring, baseball, we're separate. Track, we get to track athletes. Tennis, we have separate programs. Softball, we have separate programs. So, it's pretty much where we've been as far as, and we have, this year we were gonna send a couple of kids over to Elba to play golf. Obviously, I didn't materialize. So, that's kind of where we're at.
So, on the volleyball program, those may potentially be becoming separate?
Yes. They're gonna try to start their own modified program this year. They think they've got the numbers to do that, so they're gonna host their own modified program at Elba. We'll have our own modified team here, and then the J.B. and varsity will still be combined this year. Their hope is that their program will grow to the point where they can have their own J.B. and varsity team the next couple of years.
Justin and I maybe differ on how we got, how quickly the J.B. and varsity is gonna come together. Hopefully, you feel like you can do so.
A lot of those kids that'll be playing modified for Elba's modified team this year played with our program last year. Basically, they were their own team, did a lot of it for class formation, using it as a security device around one class. I would envision them having their own J.B. team probably next year, probably two to three years away from a varsity program. Yeah, for sure. A lot of those kids will be eighth graders this year. You know, if they're ninth and 10th graders, the next two years probably still learning the game a little bit, that'd be J.B. level, and then probably three years out, be a varsity squad.
So, they made the request. It was really only three shared sports, football, soccer, fall cheerleading. The request was made, the football, we broke out to more umbrella style, which would be pay per athlete rather than 50-50. People gave firm no on that. I was just going in the ring glass. There's a lot of new people in that room, which is just the nature of the beast. Yet, football becomes umbrella when there's only two. Concern I would have is, there's not a lot of Oldfield coaching for football program. If the football program becomes our program, we're gonna need to figure out coaching. So, I feel like when I'm in the same football game, and there's a minority amount of Elba players, and people are asking, "Why do we have to play games at Elba?" I say, "Because it's a 50-50 cost sharing and representation on coaching and where the games are played." If it's not 50-50 cost sharing anymore, all the games would be played at Elba. They've got the right to pull out of the football share program. It'd be one of the reasons why this is on an agreement. They haven't indicated that. They indicated maybe they'd like to save money, but not necessarily if they want to pull that out of the share agreement for just everybody knows that request is made. There'll be a little bit of, so we don't have the new contract yet, but there would be a little bit of language changes, which didn't seem to be a real big deal.
It'll be up for board approval in August.
So, you said that you're listening to your notice about, you know, about the modified people. The coach, which we're...
It's gonna be different coach. The plan is the practice, and they presented it, and it made a lot of sense. I think everybody that's in the meeting who practiced at Elba, from the standpoint of the entire coaching staff, J.B. and varsity did practice there. They can split up, drills, break down, everybody's kind of, you know, and quite honestly, all the soccer kids come here for practice, every day. So, you know, that seemed to make some sense, and everybody in the room, I think, is okay with that. A little bit of a shift with the modified J.B. coaches from their perspective and ours, so we're still trying to get a couple of people here to do some assistance stuff, so that's kind of where we're at.
How do the coaches do that?
Officially, right now? We have one. Yeah, we've still not been done.
What's our goal in that up to the community?
Well, I think at some point, I mean, that's typically, you know, the way the process works is, you know, we post internally, and we don't get people, and we post externally. I think that's been the way it is for every position, coaching position. So, we just typically have been pretty successful in being able to fill them. So, I'm waiting on a couple of people's answers, and then we can ultimately go from there and post. And obviously, pushing back to start the 21st gives us a little more time to try to do that, so.
The fact is, we just don't have a lot of football personnel.
Just don't have a lot of football people inside the building.
That's just how it is. Some school districts are gonna be having, but from a community's perspective, you go to your game, and you see, you know, 90% Elba coaches are in the program. But the fact of the matter is, we don't have personnel to do it. We don't have the personnel to do that. I mean, it's just the bottom line. I, because that's a real issue.
And I think the community supports that personnel concern would be if this happened in the fall. Correct.
That's an issue. That's a real issue.
Yeah.
I have a question. If all of a sudden now Elba wants to pull out and have its own standalone teams, which is of course okay, what changed? What made it so that they needed to combine with us and move now? And then why is it changing?
Specific to volleyball, are you asking now, or any...
Yeah, and football.
Volleyball was a sport that they haven't had over there in thirty years. So, probably four years ago now, I think the first group of kids would be seniors this year. They had posted, "Hey, do we have any interest in volleyball?" They had a handful of kids at the J.B. and varsity level, a couple of kids at the modified level, certainly not enough to have their own program. And I would argue, probably through our coaches and our coaches building the program, they've got that number up to now a number where I think we'll probably have four or five Elba kids on the varsity team, probably the same about the J.B. And, you know, they think they have eight or nine on the modified team. Like I said, it was kind of a standalone team. So, they, and they got it, from what I understand, and this is what I'm told, a physed person drilling the volleyball, younger levels, and does a unit in the gym, really gets it going. So, they've got to the point where they've got some interest now after twenty-some, thirty years of not having, you know, not having the ability to even have it. So, I think that's just where they're at with volleyball.
Do you foresee that happening with the rest of the sports?
No. From the standpoint of volleyball's kind of the new thing more now, soccer, it's going back and forth. They've been combined for five years. There's been times when Oldfield has had more kids, there's been times when Elba's had more kids. Last year, we graduated, I think, eight or nine seniors, seven of them, I think, were Elba kids. Two years from now, they'll be completely the opposite. You know, they'll be far more Oldfield kids than Elba kids. But because there's been that mix, and they've always had soccer, that number's kind of, it fluctuates a little, but it's standard through modification varsity. Volleyball, I think, is kind of the outlier to that. You know, it's just, it's just a different thing where they haven't had it, and now they've kind of just got this wave of interest. So, I don't think it'll really be any different in soccer. You know, and part of, you know, what drives a lot of that is just the numbers of folk buildings, you know, rolling down. You know, this year's junior class, I think, has got fifty kids, fifty-one kids, and there's only twenty-three boys. So, most of them play something, there's just not many of them. So, it goes back and forth a little bit, but I think that's the reason for the volleyball push. It's just a new thing for them, and it gets some people really pushing over there, so.
Another answer that I give that I want to realize will be in a court of public view is, you know, all the new people in the room, I believe that there's an Elba board member that is taking aim on this agreement, and isn't happy with it, and is aiming to make changes. I think that's what was driving the football thing, and I think it worked the baseball thing last year. So, in an umbrella program, the coaches come from one school or the other, and most of them are aware of our program, and possibly felt as though Elba students weren't given proper playing time, a way athletes weren't getting proper playing time in our program. So, I think there's a little bit of that that's potentially gonna happen.
About volleyball, is there a problem with...
Yeah, I think we're in good shape. We had twenty-six modified kids last year, twelve between the two. So, basically, they got their own group, we got our own group. We actually had to make some cuts at the J.B. level last year, because we had seven or eighteen kids for Elba J.B. Then we graduated, you know, three or four varsity kids, but I think our numbers are really solid in volleyball. So, losing that group, I don't really think affects our whole, whole line, numbers wise.
I think another indicator that they want in the long term is the purchases of the equipment.
Right.
They did purchase all, they took it from volleyball, and it's...
Yeah, they're making the commitment to put in an official volleyball system in their community, which is a key lane stretch, so I don't know that. Yeah, they're gonna make that, they're gonna make it work on picking it over. Sure. Thank you very much.
To approve, it has been resolved, the minutes of the 7:07, 2020 reordered, and regular meetings be approved, and the acoustics in here aren't as good, so we'll get the motions in the second. We'll speak up long enough to tell you. Second, do you...
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed? Visitors request?
Someone, any visitors request? That's a no.
Thank you. Group warrants be resolved after the bills, payment of the 6:30 and 7:17 warrants, internal claims, auto reports be approved. Motion?
So, no.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed? No treasures report tonight?
Uh, no, that would happen next month, Matt, because we're waiting on the audit for the final results of that. So, once that's done for the next meeting, we'll have that, June and July.
Could you repeat that, please?
The auditors have not started. They will start tomorrow, so we will finalize the books and do a treasures report for June and July next month.
Okay, around to you, Leonard.
Okay, so, Rob, do I have to click?
You gotta go.
So, what I wanted to do is discuss the reserve fund plan that we have been going back on fourth out a little bit, and I wanted to start with a little bit of a recap for those of you who may not have been here on the June meeting, where I went through a little more thoroughly on the reserve fund plan. This is also on board docs, if you want to bring it up yourself. We have about $5 million in reserves, just reserves, currently without our surplus for this fiscal year for 1920. And there's all the balances. That's part of the attachment two that you received in the reserve fund plan. So, what I wanted to do is just discuss a little more about the funding of the capital reserve, and I know there's been some questions on that, and I just wanted to run through exactly where we're at and what that $316,000 gets us if we fund that fully to the $2 million. So, on the left side, currently, the voters approved $15.3 million in expenditures. $2 million would be coming from reserves. $13.3 million would be funded through debt, and we have $316,505 left to fully fund that reserve. Reducing that $2 million reserve would result in a reduction in our total project cost of around $2.5 billion. Reducing that $2 million reserve would result in a reduction in our total project cost of around $2.5 billion. So, let me just walk you through the right side of the screen. So, our current aid ratio is 92.4%. That's on approved expenditures for the project. So, we're assuming that 95% of the project is going to be pursued, uh, approved for, for, uh, aidable expenditures.
So, Nicole, just.
Yep, nope.
Because I'm trying to.
Yep, inter out mammoth.
So, for, if we spend, uh, a dollar, we'll get 92 cents back?
No.
No, alright.
So, say we spend a dollar.
Yep.
We're assuming 95% of that's going to be aidable. So, 95% or 95 cents would be aidable. So, our aid ratio is 92.4%. So, if you take 92.4% of 95, that's 87.78.
Got it.
Okay, so if you look at what the district share is versus what the state is going to reimburse us for the project as a whole. That $316,000 of investment is worth $2.59 million for. And is that, did I answer, is that the question you were answering? I just wanted to verify that I'm not.
That was part of it.
Okay. So, realistically, if we did not fund that to the, with the 316 up to the 2 million, we would have to reduce our project cost around $2.5 billion. So, we'd be looking at about a $12.7 million project in whole.
So.
Yep.
This is a one if scenario because I don't understand quite how this will work fully. One if Governor Cuomo says, I'm making the most drastic cuts that have been keeping you up at night. What, so now we're concerned as a board, we kind of preserve people in progress. How would we, how would that, if we funded $316,000 up to the cap, what happens with that project?
So, the project was voter approved in June with the aid ratio of roughly 92.4%. So, in the past, Governor Cuomo has not reduced what you are due for building aid. That's never happened. He hasn't currently reduced most of his aid, he, any of the expenditure based aids, which is what the building aid is, he has not reduced. Obviously, we're closely watching that. If they all of a sudden said, okay, we're only going to fund you, um, 50%, well, then now we'd be talking a different story. The, the timing is going to be crucial. We're starting, we're starting to look at the, the layout of the project right now. So, we have a little bit of time for that. The governor has relaxed the capital reserve requirements. So, if we fund it and then he says, we're not going to give you all that money, um, next year we can use that, we can pull money out of that reserve. We will have to put it back at some point, but, and we will have to create a plan on that, but we can draw on that reserve for our current use.
But temporarily?
Temporary.
So, am I correct in understanding you correctly but wrong?
Okay.
If next year the board is faced with a horrible budget shortfall. The project could conceivably go through as is and we would have to make cuts to program and staff completely separate from the budget.
So, if you go back, let me just revert back here. So, based on what we're looking at for cuts. If you just take out what we have out of, of the capital reserve, we're still hovering around $3 million more, a little bit more in, in reserve funding. Which I anticipate can last us five to six years based on how the cuts went with G E A. Now, we don't even know if there's going to be cuts this year. I assume there's going to be some. I'm assuming some. Something's, whether it's 5% or 10%, um, I don't know that because we won't know until the federal stimulus package gets approved that have a constitution. And if it doesn't, we know for sure 20%. So, if we anticipate a similar situation to the G E A, which is all we can do is base what we know on what's happened in the past and potentially what the stock market looks like, and hopefully we start coming back soon. Then I would say it still wouldn't put us in a position not to fund that $316,000.
So, what if we voted tonight to fund $316,000? I know we're not going to. What if we did?
Yep.
And then the unthinkable happened where he didn't cut expenditure or no, sorry, where he didn't cut, he left that alone. I just want to make sure if I understand.
Yep.
So, he said, the building project is voter approved, that's going to stay. But he made drastic cuts and he lost revenue for other reasons or whatever. Conceivably, the building project could go forward while we're cutting our budget, our budget.
Yes, yes. It could conceivably do that. I don't anticipate that we're, we would have to cut our budget and cut programs at this point. I mean, that's not something we've done. We're still operating in the same mindset that we have as we, as we have been. We're waiting to see what he says. We don't want to have any overreactions about it. We want to make it sure it's smart. We have a list of things we, we want to cut and have to cut and we will cut. But I wouldn't say that those are things that are necessities for teachers. They're not programs. They're not, they're not people currently.
Well, I just wanted to make sure.
That would affect our home.
Yeah, I, I want to make sure I understood.
Yes.
How it worked.
Yes, yes. And typically, I, I, Dan who maybe speaks this a little slightly longer than me. But he has not reduced the amount of aid on building aid in 30 years. Well, and the, the, the building aid hasn't been touched once you are locked into that and you've spent that money. It hasn't been, you've never gotten a reduction in that expense base.
He hasn't touched it. It wasn't under Governor Cuomo. It was under. Carter Tackey.
Yeah.
Back in 94, there was a, there was a capital aid. Everyone went out to the project. So, he didn't know if there was a project, and then that was, you know, across the board broadly. So, that hasn't happened since about 94. So, I don't see that happening.
But that was not just for, so what happened in 94, maybe you can speak to this thing slightly better here. But we're going to get aided on our assumed debt for 15 years. So, so we're going to get a little spin off that $2 million from what they think we're going to have to borrow and the interest on that, but we don't have to pay that. So, back then, it was everybody's. So, it wasn't just people that were doing projects currently. So, that would be our entire, our entire building aid, which right now is around $2.1 million that they receive annually and go. And that was one time.
So, at one point you felt like maybe there was a reserve that we could park this money into that could fund the capital reserve later? That we could, uh, that could provide us some flexibility?
I still think that we can do that. I just am at the point where I don't feel like there's a need to do that because of the amount of our reserves and ongoing and, and where I think the reduction in the aid is going. I don't think we have to get to that point.
Is there a downside to it? To just parking this?
Just that it's more, more, more work to, to get it out of there and, and move it essentially. That's, that's the down, that would be the only downside.
That was your, that was the new reserve they're talking about, right?
Nope. So, we are, we cannot, let me just go back. So, does everybody sort of understand the way we get aided on, on our, okay, so everybody good at that? So, my recommendation, so now we have some equity transfers and on that list that I gave you of our reserve fund balances and what I said. You know, there's some equity transfers in there that we have to make. So, our, our actual surplus for the year is not going to be what we're going to move into reserves because we have to move $175,000 into a non-spendable account. We have to reduce our encumbrances. So, there's a little bit of play there.
Can I ask, what is a non-spendable account?
Money you know you're going to, that's, uh, a required accounting term.
That you owe in the future?
We owe in the future. We already paid it. So, we cannot, it's, it's just in a non-spendable form. We spent it already. So.
Alright, I just wanted to know why we'd be.
It's a requirement under, under the accounting principle. So, we have to do based on.
A payment that we made.
But it also allows us to kind of preserve some of that fund balance without having to make a decision on what to do with it at the time. So, so this would be what I would want to do. I fully understand if you don't want to fund the, the capital reserve right now, and I'm okay with that. I just want to know, typically because it's $316,000, we're not talk, talking a lot of money here in the grand scheme of things. So, um, should we just fund it now knowing that we can borrow against it in the future if we need to? These are all just questions I need answered. But I would, I think it's interesting to see how much you get from that $300,000. So.
Yeah, there's no doubt that's true. One thing, so you've mentioned a few times that the estimates are coming in low. And when I hear that, I think, well, that would be great. We could get $15 million worth of work done for $12 million.
Yes.
That's of course, if we can do $18 million worth of work, but $15 million wouldn't go to, you know, this tier two or what phase two or whatever we call that. Second sheet.
In gym.
But I, yeah. I, I guess I would be hopeful if these things are coming in low that we can have our K D eight to two, we can keep this $316,000. We can use it to fund what's coming and we can also do all the work that a year ago we thought was going to quarter maybe three months. Of course, I have no idea. Nobody has any idea until this.
So, we don't, you're right. And again, we don't know, we're just in a holding pit. Of course, we want to know the answers to questions that we don't have. Lots of them. I mean, there's a lot of unanswered questions.
We don't know anything more today than we did was at the May meeting when we moved this forward to our voters. And we said that, um, as a board, we would add scrutiny with this. We don't have any more information.
We do know that they're using, they're, he is, I mean, Governor Cuomo is using the, I, we don't have revenues to try to get the federal stimulus money to states. And we do know that he has cut 20% to cities, big cities in, in New York State currently. That's the things that I know.
So, 20 seems like a likely number without.
Without federal stimulus, yes. And then I was on, uh, all of the chapter presidents and vice presidents for the school business officials groups that are local to regional. Uh, we're on a, we're on a call and they are firmly in belief that we are going to have some sort of aid cut. But they don't, they aren't, it's going to depend on what that federal stimulus looks like. So, they're thinking if we get federal stimulus, we might have like a 5% aid cut. So. The good thing is we did get the application for the pandemic adjustment aid. So, we are going to be submitting that very soon. So, we will be getting, if, if we're going to be fully funded for foundation aid this year, that number, that would be included in that, in that number. So, if you were going to give us it, if they made an adjustment, if you recall to our aid, calling it the pandemic adjustment. And then down at the bottom, they said the federal tax act is going to reverse you for this amount. So.
For you fully fund $15 million.
Well, definitely with the acoustics here, we'll need to speak up since these guys are here.
So, for you fully fund $15 million, but we only end up spending 12, so where, where does the extra money end?
Why? So, I would say we'd want to reduce our debt and not, I, I, we would spend the $2 million in cash upfront and then our debt would be less, which would reduce our overall costs. That's, that's typically how that would go because you, we would spend our money first because there's zero interest on that. We don't have to do any short-term borrowing. Initially, we, we spend that first, what I would think our money is, and then we go out for short-term financing, um, over the next, what, typically the year now. And then we, we, we have to pay on that obviously.
So, in the long term, that is more our debt, basically, so our, our yearly payments would be less.
Right, right. Right. And so, for the board members that were on at the end of our last project, we were able to go out with the DASNE funding model, which reduced our actual debt by roughly $2 million. So, when they, what happens is the dormitory authority, they get a group of like governmental schools, cities, towns who need debt and they, they publish that together and all of the costs associated with that are taken out of, um, what you would pay. So, like, uh, attorney's fees and all that. So, when you come back and say, I need 13 million in debt, they say, well, we were able to get you a premium of, in our case, it was roughly $2.4 million. Then they take your fees right out of that. So, it technically reduces your debt in the end that you're paying.
If we don't fund, you said we fully funded, that means $2.5 million gets up to that. If we don't fund it, would we not get that ready to top? So, even though we approved a $15 million project and the bins are coming in at $12, for example?
Mm-hmm. We're only aided on what the assumed debt services. So, I send in these huge stacks of final cost reports to state ed and they go through them and they say, well, painting out a wall, that's not approved. And they, we have a little bit of bickering back and forth, our architects getting called, and then they come to a final dollar amount. And so, whether that's cash or, or bond, the final cost that we submit for the project is what we're aided on. Does that, does that answer your question? So, we're not obviously aided on the 15 million if we only spend 12.
My last question would just be, and you're on a tour right now, but, uh, so if we don't have those $200,000 to get 20%. What would that, what would we be running on? How would we, here?
Yes. So, I don't have the answer to that because I think we would want to work as a team to figure out, here's what our highest priorities are. And then here's what, what we're not.
So, I think that would kind of be a, you know, obviously we can see what the long-term benefit of it is, but what the short-term?
I mean, the unfortunate situation is it's not like we're putting in anything that's jazzy or fun. It's like we're, we're doing out front for safety purposes. We're, we're assisting in, in the elementary school for the, the whole bit of drop-offs. Um, and we're looking at taking money, I think we can obviously, and maximizing that, that aid ratio, um, and having approved expenses. So, it's windows, you know, at the, at the middle high that desperately need to be, really gone. I don't, that's why I don't, it would be very hard for me to sit and say, here's what we should.
I'd want to see though, I mean, the regular annual school budget, what we think we would have to cut out.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. If we were short of 316. Okay. Well, so here's what I would say is we're planning on using reserves, some of them. That's why, that is part of the reason why we do say on a yearly basis. So, at the end of the day, instead of cutting the expense, can we fill that hole with our reserve? But we need to make sure that we're thoughtful about that process. Because if we don't think in five years we're going to have, um, the same level of aid as we have right now. Then we have to look at ways of being creative and, um, reducing our expenditures or for such regular taxes, which is never on there and we don't want to do. So, does that?
Kind of, I guess.
We talked about that.
So, with what you said though, with that 316, $15,000, by putting that into capital reserve now, we would be able to go out with $15 million project. Into the future, if we are shortened on our aid by 316,000%. There are other reserves, but the trial for, to fill that gap in the general budget. To eliminate any cuts.
Because, because of the level of our reserves currently, we have some room to actually use them in the future.
So, like when you talk about those other reserves, like some of them seem like, I, I know you're, you're increasing some, like the unemployment one. You're proposing to increase by 100,000, I think.
Yes, I mean, our last bill for unemployment was $30,000.
Right, and if you take that 241,000, divide it by that, you get about eight employees, which I don't think that that's a lot of them. Right now, where we're at, we could have a lot more than eight people.
I agree. So.
Right, so that to me seems.
We did, we can have a lot more than eight employees.
Be unemployed.
Okay.
A lot of them.
Well, and I mean, I think.
That to me seems like a reserve fund.
Yes. I don't want to overfund that to a level where I don't think. Yes. I don't want to overfund that to the level where I don't think, because some of that $30,000 bill is coming back to us as part of the Federal Care Act. We, the states are going to reimburse us for half the cost of our unemployment, which is amazing. So, but we have to apply for that. And I don't know when that's going to happen. And we have to pay the bill first. So, um, I am just aiming at, because typically we've been said to be overfunded in, in unemployment and putting some in there and the, um, the employee, employee retirement contribution reserve are typically the easiest to pull from.
That was, yeah, that was kind of like, like what, what, what reserve funds are actually like, what more liquid where they can actually pull from. And to Matt's point, I think other people's points, you know, as well, but kind of do he have the absolute need to? And I, when I look at these reserve funds, I, I don't know where we're going to get that 316, 16,000 years as we're speaking.
And it may not be, we were talking like 1.5 million, right? If it's 20%. We're talking about a number a lot bigger than that.
Than 316.
If, if it's 20%.
If it's 20%, yes.
Yeah. So that's the number to sort of brace.
Well, I don't think.
I think I'm looking at the wrong number here, which I should be going at 1.5.
Is the reduction.
So the 300 can be used in the 1.5. So we're still about 1.2 million there on dollars worth of work to do, whether it's cuts in the school or it's fallback on reserves. Realizing this could be three to five years.
We're looking at a lineup book and, and trying to optimize, you know, the resources that we currently have and trying to use them, utilize them in the best manner we absolutely can. So. I still firmly believe that if it, if it's cut 20% this year, I, I wouldn't think it'd be cut 20% next year. I don't really answer for that yet. But again, I'm comfortable with moving into one of those reserves and then it'll be a little bit more work. They'll need to be a board either 10-day notice or can't remember exactly on the, on the ERS reserve. Uh, but to get that money out of there in the move to. So, but we could certainly do it.
Just we don't have a ton of, that's the hardest part. I think we've done a couple of big things here on the board the last two months with the teacher, teacher salary. I thought that was pretty big. And, I don't know, capital project or community trust, just to make that decision. And who followed, got a lot of information that maybe in the reserves, it might find a way out. But I, I get what you're saying. This is a huge thing for our budget. We can refill it up to 2 million. It's a huge debt. It's something that I haven't really given about the last couple of, full life.
Sure.
How long can we delay this decision or don't yet have a firm idea of?
I don't have a firm idea of that. Because realistically, they have to draft the design, then they have to look at how much the design is going to cost. And then it's a bit of a test. So all those things are take time. So we have at least a couple of months to think about it. Um, realistically, the next meeting, we need to approve the move, whatever into reserves or surplus for this 1920 year. So, but before I did that, I just wanted to make sure the consensus was there on where that should go.
Where are you proposing it should go? When did that TRS?
I can't, we can't, because we haven't approved that.
You can't do it until next year.
We can't do it until this, yes, this this week. So we're approving it, um, uh, hopefully in the very near future or, uh, at the next meeting. And then we will be able to fund that with subsequent, this year and subsequent years access.
So then would, would that, would you say that that, whatever that 300 plus in the retirement would just stay there? Because that's what we're talking about shipping around, right? That reserve.
We're just talking about whatever the excess equity is just being moved into whatever house. And so yes, we can certainly just split it up between the unemployment and the ERS if that is the role of the board.
Is there any part of what you know today that you can foresee have an impact, not just on the current school year, but also on the next school year? And I know you don't have a crystal ball any more than the residents.
Well, TRS and ERS are certainly going to catch up with us at some point with the big loss money on the, um, stock market when those are back. So we're going to look, be looking at increased rates over the next. I'm thinking, they haven't come out with their approved rate yet for TRS this year. I mean, we're only in July. What do you, what does that matter? So, um, I'm interested in that over the next two to three weeks. So I'm thinking once I see that, I'm going to have, try to have a better feeling about what the following years are going to be. But I'm thinking the rates obviously are going to go up for those. I mean, they're historical lows. We're at 8.86 this past fiscal year, which is very low, very low. So we won't be able to enjoy those types of benefits, uh, long. So that's the only, the only foresee thing that I can see that this situation has, has caused is that the economy is, is terrible right now. But it's coming back slowly as they reopen things, you know, from what we've heard and seen over the last 15, 16, 17.
So up for approval tonight is your reserve fund plan. How does, does this discussion change that recommendation or?
I don't think it changes the plan. Really, the plan is just, we're going to put, hopefully, fund fully the capital reserve at some point this next fiscal year. And then everything else, I, I want to have the TRS approved as long as you, you are all okay with that. The sub-fund, that's a sub-fund of the ERS reserve. Um, I want to have that approved for just what you're saying, you know. Do you know of anything else? Well, really just ERS and TRS, and then we'll have those for use in the future. So realistically, I don't think it has to change because we still want to do that, but we're just postponing it until we know more information.
Thanks Nicole.
Yep.
Are we just pushing everything of yours?
Push mine, yep, to the end. Okay. So John's going to report to us at the end of the meeting, including the reopening plan. So we're on to new business. We resolved the items 72 through 77, be approved via consent agenda. Good motion.
So.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. 7.8 instructional calendar, we resolved instructional and management calendars. Will come school year, the amendment is follows, September 9th and 10th will become superintendent conference days. October 19th, February 17th will be instructional days. September 11th will be the first day of student attendance. Good motion? Second. Yeah. A discussion?
I, I personally like the count. I like the slide. It's favorable for the teachers to kind of react with themselves. I, I appreciate it.
Yeah, we have, um, we have two superintendent conference days that are throughout the school year, um, that we feel are real necessary for what our reopening plans are going to be. I think it's, um, good for teachers to get acclimated back. There's going to be certainly some mandatory trainings that are coming down the line. Um, and certainly lots of guidance and, um, um, I don't want to say directive, but new protocols and procedures to open up this building in the fall. And I think we need that time at the beginning to make sure that we are all on board. And, um, you know, I believe it's appropriate to use those days at the beginning of the school year to, to ease back into it. So, um, you know, it's, uh, we got to make sure we take care of our own staff and our own wellbeing before we bring the kids back. So that was the reason for utilizing those days at the beginning and pushing up.
I like the Friday back. You'll be able to see how they're going to function.
What, yes. What, what that allows is for the kids to come back on that Friday and really just have a day to see what it looks like. Um, because we're not going to really have any idea. And it gives administration and, and our staff just a chance to get here for a day, see what it's like. And then, um, gives us a 48 hours to tweak things and to get ready for the following Monday. So, um, I think it's a nice way to ease into the school year, especially with our goal to be back 100%.
I think there's going to be a lot of emotion on that day. And, uh, literally exhausted physically and emotionally. It's going to be nice to have 48 hours to rebound. I don't think people realize how big of a day this is going to be coming back. I think this plan shows this is, this is put, this is thought put into what I call a candle. I'd like to do this as well.
Any other discussion there? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Communications? We've got, we've got what we've got there. Discussion roundtable? Think anything submitted there?
Can I just add one thing real quick? It's not a question I'm, um, because I was camping, I didn't get your letter, John, to read today, and I sent you the email. And I appreciated the tone of it and how carefully you worded it so that it was acknowledging of the difficulties, but not giving into the fear of it. And I thought you did a good job on that. And I appreciated you sending it out along with the inclusion of what's to come, so people know what comes back. And I did appreciate that.
Thank you.
And I also appreciated the board retreat where we got some insights into each other because we have so many new things to do that it was good to, um, find out how we can work together. So I liked that too. I think you did a good choice of putting that back. I shouldn't refer to him as that guy.
So we'll, we'll have to figure out our goal setting, um, you know, as a board to get to John. Obviously a big goal, of course, is getting the school open and, uh, you know, the staff and students to be safe. We're going to be evaluating John in six months and 12 months. So it's fair to set a goal of two, um, but of course, this school year is going to be unique. So I guess as a board, we need to figure out, um, what kind of a balance we want to place on, um, goals that are important to us to give to John while realizing that, uh, this building's got, uh, some big hurdles coming their way. So just put some thought into that for us and we'll collaborate on that. Uh, for committees, we did soar Hexton, instructional health and wellness. And there's probably nothing going on for committees or council.
That's correct.
Listen now, we resolved the personnel items 10, 2 through 10, 8, be approved via consent agenda. Good motion?
So.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Yeah, I think Haley is here.
Probably. Congratulations, right?
Yes.
Happy birthday, we're a second grade, um, team member and we're excited to have her. She's an alumni, she's a school here. Um, so she's, she's on her way back to us in the year. Great to have her back.
Welcome.
Thanks.
We couldn't bring your cake for you tonight. Normally we would take your cake, but not, not tonight.
We're going to hold it to you then.
Hey, I've got fireman today.
So no, no executive session, uh, tonight. Um, so I guess we'll, we'll do, John.
Oh, one thing. I, I want to say thank you to the Phil C. Martin for his years of work and his service in the district. And I wish him a happy retirement.
Yep.
And I wish that he would resign the best to thank all the new ventures.
Okay, um, you have in front of you a draft copy of our 2021 reopening plan. As you are aware, a few weeks ago, we received guidance from New York State in regards to what we needed to submit as far as our plan to reopen schools. Sitting down with administration and, um, obviously the valuable stakeholders in our district, putting out some surveys, um, talking to people, reviewing those surveys, reviewing the results. We felt it best that the Oakfield Alabama Central School District has an end goal in mind to return to 100% in-person learning come the fall. I want to mention that this plan that I will, um, review with you is a working document. It is live. I think my last edit was about an hour and a half ago. Guidance changes by the day, if not by the hour, if not by the minute. And I think it will continue to change as we move forward. This plan that's here in front of you is ready to be submitted to State Ed tomorrow morning. Part of the seminal plan is to make sure that we provide a link to it so it can be reviewed by State Ed. Instead of just submitting the plan, they want, um, basically a link to our website. And this plan will be posted to our website, uh, by the end of the week for, uh, community members to view. The reason being is that, again, it's a working document. Um, this is not what it's going to look like a week from now. We're going to have to add things. We'll have to tweak things. We'll have to change things. We may have to eliminate things. I have, um, an idea that when this is submitted by the end of the week and it's up for review next week, I am certain that some way, in some sort of, some fashion, we will have to provide additional information or, um, different guidance to, um, have this plan approved. So in talking with the superintendents, again, this is our shot at, um, getting our schools reopened in the fall. And, um, we'll, again, just continue to tweak this plan until it is approved by the state. The guidance that the state gave us was 148 pages long. And to reopen our district, whether it be, um, 100% in-learning, a hybrid version, or completely remote, there were things in this plan that were mandatory requirements. So as I go over this plan, please understand that this is a bird's eye view of what our district is. A lot of this plan is reassurances that we will provide the safety, the health, and all the requirements that State Ed is looking for. Over the next few weeks, we should hear from the governor, um, next week in regards to the reopening of the Finger Lakes region, which right now, all the data, you know, of, of the COVID crisis points to that we can reopen. We are going to have a few, uh, extra meetings with our task force. One will be on, I believe, August 10th, in which we will roll out our ground level view of what the building protocols will be. We'll lay that out to the task force. We'll get, uh, feedback, questions, concerns, and, um, you know, a lot of suggestions back. We will certainly go and tweak those. The following Monday, we'll focus in on the hybrid learning and what the remote learning will look like. Again, uh, the task force, which is comprised of teachers, administrators, board members, uh, parents, students, nurses, will provide us feedback. We will tweak those plans. And then at the August 18th board meeting, I will review with you what our three plans look like. But understand that, um, that our end goal is to be here 100% in-person learning. So this plan is really divided up into some major categories. The first category is communication. We need to provide a protocol and reassurance to our citizens that we will communicate with parents, students, faculty and staff regarding information on COVID-19 and related topics. We have an operations section. It explains the health and safety protocols for COVID-19 testing, contract tracing, workplace risk assessment, cleaning and disinfecting, ventilation, and our HVAC system. It will provide procedures for buildings and grounds, transportation and food service. There's a whole section on health and safety protocols. We have building procedures. There's a whole section on academics. There's a section on athletics. And we need to reassure, um, New York State and obviously our students and families that we have the social emotional supports. So what we did is we provided a table of. So what we did is we provided a table of contents that, again, are in these sections, and within these sections, we have subsections or sublinks. So once this is posted to the website, anybody can go in and actually click on, let's see, communications, I want to see about restrooms and locker rooms, and they can click on that and it will automatically take them to that in that document. This document currently, right now, I believe, is 67 pages long, so we kind of made it a user-friendly type of deal if someone's looking for certain information, we provided those links. So what I would like to do is to, not briefly, but to kind of skim over for you these reassurances. And again, please know to the board that once this plan is approved, that we will have online platforms, that I will, you know, be able to introduce and provide this information over and over again to our citizens, and we'll have avenues to answer questions, to be interactive with us, you know, when we're working out those dates. So once we, you know, finalize our ground-level plans, we'll certainly get that information out. So this general information under communication talks about how we get information out there. We've obviously used numerous communication channels to inform parents, students, teachers, and administrators of what's going on. We are moving to a new platform called Parent Square. So if you've received notification over the last month or so from the school, that is coming through a new platform called Parent Square, it is a, it is the only platform that we will be using. Administration, the robo-calls, the emails, the texts, the teachers will be trained on using Parent Square, and it will be our one source to get the communication out there to you. Obviously, we are working on our website. It's under construction right now. That is where we will have our primary letters, documents, event headlines, frequently asked questions, and general information about the district and each school building. We use our Twitter accounts, our Facebook account, and so we have multiple ways of getting all of that correspondence out to our families. We have to assure that we will have proper signage in all areas to promote best practices in the safety of building, you know, building employees and students. The CDC has specific websites that we will utilize to print the signage for them, and we'll print those off and put those in areas. The signage will be about social distancing, staying six feet apart, proper hand washing, proper use of masks. We'll have signs of where students should be wearing masks, where employees need to wear masks. All of this are, is, you know, basically reassurances that the state needs from us. So when we talk about building operations, obviously, we are following the CDC guidelines, the federal guidance, and obviously NICE Ed for all of their, you know, all of their strategies in opening. We will make sure that our staff and these buildings are stocked and supplied with PPE. Cleaning and disinfection have been purchased. Every classroom, there'll be more stations for hand washing and sanitation. Again, we will post signs on how to stop the spread of COVID, how to properly wash hands, promote everyday protective measures, and wearing face covering. Please understand that we have to train our staff on how to do all of this, and then train our students once they get here on how to do all of this.
The availability of all those, that's going okay. So you mentioned that you purchased a bunch of the face shields.
Yes.
Have you received that?
Yes.
You haven't received it?
Yes. So we have enough face masks to supply our staff and students, and I'll get to that in a second of what we kind of expect. Knowing that there may be reasons why certain employees can't wear a mask, we've purchased face shields, we've purchased different types of face shields. The ones that Jordan has right now unfortunately look like heavy-duty riot here. They're very expensive because we probably realize that teachers will be talking a lot, and a face mask is probably not the best thing to communicate with. I'm a lip reader, and I know that when someone wears a mask, it's, I have to listen twice as hard to hear what they're saying. And so we receive feedback of what else can teachers use when talking to their students. So we have clear plastic face shields. Some are from the head down, but we're also looking into ones where they're kind of attached to your chin and have the face up, so you're actually not looking through the face, the face shield. So we'll make that available to our staff. I do think a lot of our staff will purchase their own that they're comfortable with, but there's a lot of options out there for what our staff can use. Cleaning and disinfecting. Obviously, the health and wellness and, you know, the cleaning of our buildings is number one. We will conduct regular cleaning and disinfection at the facilities and more frequent cleaning and disinfection for high-risk areas used by many individuals and for frequently touched services, including student desks, cafeteria tables, you know, the doorknobs, all of those types of things. Office spaces will be cleaned on the second shift daily. High-touch areas and office spaces will be disinfected daily. Basically, the premise on this is when students are using a desk and they switch classes, the desk will be cleaned before the next cohort of kids come in. Cafeteria tables. Once students sit down to eat and they get up, those cafeteria tables will be disinfected and cleaned. I know Jordan has some additional staff members that will be on for each building during the day to help with that, and we're going to need assistance from administration all the way down to teachers to make sure that, you know, our building is remaining, you know, safe and sanitary for our students. Toys, classroom objects, community play materials, community supplies, and physical education equipment will be disinfected daily. If playgrounds are open, they will be disinfected daily. Coverage hours for cleaning staff should be expanded to allow more frequent cleaning throughout the day, including frequent cleaning and disinfection of shared objects and surfaces as well as high-transit areas such as restrooms and common areas. Obviously, the custodial and cleaning staff will be provided with disposable gloves and masks to perform their cleaning and disinfection duties. They need to be also trained on how to properly clean and disinfect certain areas. We are going to follow and need to follow the hygiene and sanitation requirements for the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention and the Department of Health document. There's a document that came out about interim cleaning and disinfection guidance for primary and secondary schools. We will follow that to a T. All of our disinfecting products specifically are labeled for the COVID, and we already have those in stock, and those will be used. The district will provide microfiber wipes and disinfecting spray bottles for every classroom to faculty and staff so that commonly-used areas like chairs and desks, keyboards, door handles, remote controls, in-class bathroom faucets, that's more so at the elementary level, can be wiped down before and after use. Again, teachers and support staff will be responsible for general cleaning with their classrooms, keeping cleaning supplies out of the reach of children. Students should not be in the immediate area where disinfecting is being used, nor should they be asked to disinfect any cleaning area. Trained custodial staff will be responsible for the heavier cleaning and disinfecting within classrooms. Obviously, we need to outline the process and expectations for an extended school closure if for some reason we are closed and the continued levels of cleanliness. So the next few pages just talk about and highlight the areas that basically need to be checked off. Please understand that with all of these new cleaning and disinfecting protocols, the custodial staff will keep logs of what they are doing daily as far as cleaning and disinfecting rooms and certain areas. If an employee becomes ill with COVID-19, the building may be disinfected and may be closed for a determined amount of time. If any student or employee of the district is ill with COVID-19, we turn that over to the Department of Health and follow their guidelines. And basically, we are reassuring that we will do that. We also have to be a part of their contact tracing system, and we will certainly abide by those guidelines. So a lot of this is just reassuring that we will follow their protocols and procedures. Obviously, our buildings and ground staff will receive training on proper cleaning and disinfecting and how to use each product. Ventilation. The buildings and ground staff will ensure ventilation systems operate properly and will increase circulation of outdoor air as much as possible. We use actually filters in our HVAC system that are more than the minimum recommended filtration system. I believe we're on the MERV, MERV eight or MERV nine, and I think the minimum recommended is a MERV three or four. So I know Jordan and his crew have been changing the filters. One of the things that we're going to notice is that a lot of windows will be opened. We can now prop classroom doors open. We want to make this building kind of a breezeway. The exchange of air is very, very important. Unfortunately, on hot days, it's going to feel warmer in classrooms because instead of maybe circulating 10% of the air with 90% of air-conditioned air, it's about a 50/50, you know, split now. So, but ventilation is very, very important in stopping the spread and not having the building.
John, I have a question.
Sure.
Because I taught here so long. In the old days, the end doors of each corridor used to be left open, and the air funneled through the building, made it smell much better, lots of fresh air. Then security issues came to be in fashion, and so the doors had to be locked.
Correct.
A board member said that, or a board doesn't. I always wondered, couldn't those, whatever you call the lights above the doors be made to open? They're too high and too small for an intruder to get in unless they really worked hard and don't have cameras to prevent that. That would help a lot with circulated fresh air.
The only doors that we cannot prop open are the ones that are the fire doors that are magnet to the walls, so when the fire goes off, they automatically shut.
I know, but I'm talking to ones to the outside of the end of corridors. Because there used to be, from south to north, a wonderful breeze that blew in.
We're still not going to prop any outdoors, but you're correct.
Can we, by any chance, replace those lights above the doors, those small windows, and make those openable?
Yeah, well, we're going to do.
Can you look into that?
Yeah.
Because I know just from living in buildings for 30 years, it's got to smell bad.
Right.
There's, the air is certainly stale when it's open.
Absolutely, absolutely. Obviously, hygiene. Sanitizing products were provided and located on nearly commonly-shared equipment and supplies, copiers. Prior to the use of shared pieces of equipment, the employee should sanitize the parts that will be touched. After use of shared piece of equipment, the employee should sanitize that area that was touched. Employees should then practice hand washing and hand sanitizing procedures. What you're going to see is probably every six to 10 feet, there's going to be a Pure L dispenser around here. I mean, that's just, that's the, that's what we live in right now. Obviously, the disinfection requirements as by the CDC DOH, including that document, Stop the Spread posters, will be available throughout the building. Again, we must maintain logs that include the date, time, and scope of cleaning and disinfection. The district will identify cleaning and disinfection frequency for each facility type and assign responsibility. Again, we will provide and maintain hand hygiene stations for personnel, including hand washing with soap, water, and paper towels, or the alcohol-based hand sanitizer containing 60% or more alcohol for areas where hand washing is not feasible. Visitors to our building will be very limited, if at all allowed. Limitations include employees who are not otherwise scheduled to work on a given day. In general, the building will be considered closed for the remainder of this summer with only essential staff, any other employees assigned to work when absolutely necessary, and the construction contractors being within the building. Employees and other visitors will be asked the purpose for their visit and whether their business can be accomplished through phone, email, or mail before being allowed into the buildings. If they are dropping something off, they should be advised to leave them at the door. So our policy now, or should I say procedure? I didn't want to say policy. Our procedure and protocol for guests into the building is going to be very limited. We have the capabilities of communicating now with somebody outside without even letting them in the first set of doors. And if they are here to drop off something, a lunch, a backpack, sporting equipment, we're actually just going to say, please leave it there, and then we'll come out and get it. Any visitor into our buildings, we'll have a separate kiosk. Not only will they have to register through our Raptor system, but there'll be a kiosk that they have to ask and answer those five typical CDC questions about COVID. If they actually answer wrong and there's a concern, the administrators, we all get an email and alert, and we'll whisk that person off of campus. So really, we're going to limit the visitors in our building. Unfortunately, you know, that, that really means, you know, more so for the elementary because they have a lot of birthdays and, you know, celebrations down there. It's, they're going to be very few, you know, very few of those.
Do you get into their rooms throughout the course of the summer at all, or is that...
Yes, as we start, you know, finalizing our plans, yes. I know that they're already chomping at the bit to do that. Right now, any employee, including myself, that come into work every single day, we sign a logbook that we are okay, we check our temperatures, and so, you know, I think you guys came in this afternoon and were told to do the same. So those are the strict guidelines that we have just to make sure that this place is okay. If it's not, at least we have documentation and can, you know, keep track. Sure. Again, only visitors with scheduled meetings with an employee in the building should be allowed in, and they will, again, respond to monitoring questions through our Raptor system. We will make sure that deliveries are to the building loading docks, for the most part they are. But again, delivery people should be requested to wear a face covering when entering the building. Social distancing should be practiced. We talk about transportation. This goes for all employees, including administrator, teachers, anybody that works on campus. We will have to self-monitor ourselves on a daily basis, and we will also be responding to self-monitoring questions and daily temperature checks. We currently, right now, are putting in a protocol to have employees check off, you know, the questions to make sure that their, you know, health and wellness is up to par. And again, they will have daily temperature checks. We have purchased about 16 or 17 of the infrared thermometers, so it takes about a quick two to three seconds to check your temperature, log it in, and off you go. Bus drivers will be doing the same. Buses will be cleaned and disinfected on a daily basis. Drivers will wipe down high-touch surfaces between bus runs. So we'll have our middle-high bus run in the morning, and before they run out to the elementary building, or, excuse me, do the elementary run, the buses will be cleaned and disinfected. If you were here for our first task force meeting, Josh kind of looked like the Ghostbusters. He had a little canister, and it looked like a little bug thing. So we're looking at to see what is the most efficient way to get those buses cleaned and disinfected before the next bus run. In order to reduce the density of students on buses, no more than one student will be assigned to each seat unless they are seated with their own sibling or family member. All students will be required to wear a facial covering during transport. We are going to let the bus drivers know that when they pull up to the bus stop and a child is waiting for the bus, they must have a mask on. Students with health concerns or other needs where face masks are not recommended to be worn should... be worn should wear a face shield. I'm going to ask the parents of the community to make sure that if your child is not used to wearing a face mask or a face shield, that they begin to train them to wear one, because it'll be mandatory to ride the bus. Bus drivers will be required to wear facial coverings at all times. We're asking that students and staff should wear face coverings at the bus stops. We will instruct students and parents to maintain six feet distancing at the bus stops and while loading and unloading. We will seat students from the rear of the bus forward to prevent students from walking past each other. This would be during AM pickup. If you are the first person to get picked up, Justin, you're sitting in the back of the bus. We are going to try and limit students from walking past one another, so the afternoon runs will have assigned seats based on the order in which students will be dropped off. So the student who gets dropped off first will sit in the front of the bus. Obviously, during dismissal, it's a little more chaotic, so we'll have assigned seats for students in the afternoon runs. Obviously, school bus drivers, monitors, attendants, and mechanics shall perform a self-health assessment for symptoms before arriving to work. If personnel are experiencing any symptoms of COVID, they should notify their employer and seek medical attention, and I'll get to that in a second. Again, school bus drivers, monitors, attendants, and mechanics must wear a face covering along with an optional face shield. Transportation staff will be trained and provided periodic refreshers on the proper use of personal protective equipment and the signs and symptoms of COVID-19. We will provide masks and gloves for the drivers, monitors, and attendants in the buses, as well as hand sanitizer for all staff in the transportation locations such as dispatch offices, employee lunchroom, break rooms, and/or bus garages. There is guidance that you cannot have sanitizing stations on buses. That was the first thing that we said was, hey, wouldn't that be great? As a student's getting on the bus, have, you know, use some hand sanitizer. Obviously, that's combustible, and it's prohibited. Drivers, monitors, and attendants who must have direct physical contact with the child must wear gloves. So here is a quick snapshot of what students would look like sitting on a bus. We can fit approximately 22 students on a bus, give or take a few if we have a couple that are sitting with their siblings.
How do you have to flex that challenge? Is there going to be a monitor in each bus? Does it need...
We are going to have monitors floating around. We are going to tell the bus drivers more so for the middle, high school runs. I'm going to need community help. I'm going to need parent help with this. The parents and families will receive a packet towards the end of August of just real straightforward directives. There's a lot that we're going to have to have families do, and there's a lot that we're going to have to have students understand, because it's very hard for us to police this. One of the concerns about reopening in the fall is, how do you police these? One of the things that I'm going to get to is that students, basically, our mantra is if a student is standing, they have a mask on. We cannot possibly police during passing time that every student in the hallway has their mask on. We will do our best. We will train the kids. But we cannot police where I have a student that outwardly says, "I'm not wearing this mask, I'm not doing this." We just, we just can't police that. So students need to understand that transportation is a privilege, it's actually not a right. And if they can't abide by these directives that we have to enforce, then we will not provide them transportation. Simple as that.
How did the results come back for transportation?
A lot of, a lot of people said if, and what we're trying to do is, if you need transportation, and we don't want people to think that they have to drive their kids, it certainly helps. So I know Josh looked at those results, and he kind of rerouted some runs, and he's looking at the attendance. We're in good shape. We're in good shape. So, but again, if parents can drive their kids, if their kids can walk on a nice day, ride their bikes, that would certainly help us out. But we also have to know that, you know, bad weather, something happens, and we have to provide that kid a ride, we need to be able to fill the, you know, so, so this is the worst case, and we're okay. So. Again, as was outlined in the health and safety section of this plan, all parents' guardians will be required to ensure their children are not experiencing any signs and symptoms of COVID-19 and do not have a fever of 100.4 degrees or more prior to them boarding their method of transportation to school. One of the things that we are going to make as a protocol, and we're working through Parents Square, is that we are going to send parents and families a quick form, a quick check form, before their child leaves for school to verify that their child is healthy, feeling well, and does not have a temperature. Now, I say that with my tongue in cheek, because, once again, we need to rely on the families to do this. Bottom line is, if you're not feeling well, don't come to school. You know, we really need to be careful with that, and again, we're going to see the type of response that we do receive. We are responsible for temperature checking kids as they come into school. I will tell you on the record that it's impossible to do that. So we really need to rely on the parents and the kids. We will have secure entrance ways and very selective ways that kids can enter our buildings. We will have monitors in those buildings, but it is very much impossible for us to temperature check every kid that walks through the door. So a lot of it is training our staff on looking for symptoms, looking for signs. Jeez, that student doesn't look to be, you know, healthy, and certainly we'll temperature check, but we really need the parents to kind of sign off saying that, "I'm sending my kids to school," and really help us gauge the health and wellness of their kids. Obviously, students must wear a mask on a school bus if they are physically able. Students who are unable to medically tolerate a face covering, including students where such coverings would impair their physical health or mental health, are not subject to the required use of a face mask, but should wear a face shield. And again, there's just other stipulations in here. Obviously, we cannot deny transportation to students who do not have a mask. We will provide one, so all of the buses will have one. I will assume that for the most part, families have already purchased, and their children are already wearing some sort of mask, but we will provide them and deny them transportation. Okay? Some other stipulations in here regarding if we're in session remotely or otherwise. When students embark and disbar the bus, they should follow the social distancing protocols. Again, we understand that when buses arrive here in the morning and we kind of have a staggered release of students off the buses, this will increase the time required for us to unload the buses and load the buses in the morning and the afternoon. I've talked with the building principals. They are going to continue with their normal times, but, you know, passing times may be a bit longer. The arrival and departures may be just a little more lengthy, so we are going to kind of probably cut down on some, you know, 40-minute classes may look like 38, just until we can see and revise and review and make our plans more efficient. Again, we're small enough that we don't need to stagger arrival and departure times. I know that we will certainly review and tweak our drop-off up here at the middle high school, and I certainly know that Lynn down at the elementary, that's one of the things that is high priority, is the drop-off of elementary students with the buses and the pickup. I know a lot of parents drop them off and pick them up, and we appreciate that, but it can't be all at once. So those are the protocols that over the next few weeks, we will get out to the community of what that looks like. Okay? Obviously, since hand sanitizer is not permitted on the school buses, there'll be a means to dispense hand sanitizer when students enter the building or classroom. Food service workers fall under the same category, obviously, with temperature checks, and they will be self-reporting their COVID-19-type symptoms. Kitchen areas will be cleaned and disinfected on a daily basis. Food service workers will wear face coverings and gloves at all times. Equipment, including high-touch objects, will be disinfected daily. Again, we'll ensure gloves, masks, clean disposable aprons, and other supplies are ready available. We are going to be using disposable trays, and we're going to wrap cold items in plastic and hot food with foil. Okay? We're looking at our employee shifts to minimize the number of staff in the kitchen. We're going to stagger meal times to allow cleaning between meal services and to serve students in smaller groups. We're going to provide at least six feet of social distancing between students or tables by increasing the table spacing, removing tables, marking tables as closed, or providing alternative spaces for food consumption. I've told the building principals, hopefully, within the first month or so, if the weather is nice, you get those kids outside to eat. Get them on the back lawn, spread them out. Obviously, we need to social distance because students will not be required to wear masks when they're eating, so we need to make sure that they are properly social distancing. So we will have plans for that. One of the ideas up here at the middle high school is to actually get rid of the tables and provide a whole bunch of individual desks for students to eat at. Obviously, we'll have physical guides, tapes on the floor, signage on the walls to ensure that students remain at least six feet apart in lines or while waiting for seating. Okay? We're going to have physical barriers at the point-of-sale and other areas where maintaining physical distancing of six feet is difficult. One of the things that we do not want more so for the middle high school kids to do is to put in their PIN number for their lunches when they're touching the keypad. So we will have student IDs that they will just swipe, or, you know, the cashier can just quickly zap, and their account will come up. Again, all cafeteria tables will be disinfected between lunch periods and the cohorts. Staff will routinely clean and disinfect high-touch surface areas, including tables, chairs, cart used in transportation, and those point-of-sale touchpads, which I don't think they will be using. Okay? We're going to have students wash their hands before and after they eat. We also, you know, discourage the food sharing, you know, the sharing tables, all of those types of things. We're going to have trash cans around the cafeteria to limit students walking around the cafeteria to throw their garbage out. And again, there'll be plenty of signage and tapes on the floors, probably more so at the elementary of one-way-in, one-way-out type of deal. We're looking at providing the grab-and-go breakfast and lunches, and everything, for the most part, will be prepackaged, and I'll get to that a little later in the document. Okay? We certainly have, have to provide breakfast and lunches to our students who are possibly learning remotely. We can give them additional meals when they're in school or remote, like we did in the spring. We'll have pickup and delivery days that we had this past spring. Again, we just need to note that we'll have separate tables and spaces that are designated to protect students with food allergies, and so here are some of the protocols and procedures. For the elementary school, breakfast will consist of one cold meal or hot meal. This will be a bag with a fruit, juice, and milk. Breakfast will be distributed to students in the classroom after morning arrival. Student lunches will be pre-ordered, and students will enter the café food line, practicing social distancing, and receive their pre-made lunch with milk, vegetable, and fruit. The meals will be boxed in advance. There will be wrapped à la carte menu items available, and upon request, the cashier will hand items to students. Again, the cashiers will bring up the student's account using our class roster feature or barcode, and we do ask that possibly just because of, you know, the transmittal of, you know, the potential for people touching money, that it's preferred that the family use the myschoolbucks.com app or use a check to pay and put money in their child's account. Students will sit in the cafeteria with their class cohort. This is more so for the elementary. One of the big things that the elementary will do this year is they will travel in their cohort. Not that that's much of a difference, but certainly we're really going to supervise that, that they're only with their class cohort. The monitors and cafeteria aids will help seat the students. They will help clean and sanitize the tables between serving times. And again, the trash receptacles will be spaced throughout the cafeteria to discourage extensive student travel in the cafeteria. Masks must be worn by students until they are seated. So again, our mantra is, if you're up and you're on your feet, you have a mask on. The middle high school, again, breakfast will consist of one cold meal or hot meal. This will be bagged with fruit, juice, and milk. They will be provided in the cafeteria and may be consumed there or in their first-period class. Again, this is something that we're going to have to monitor the first few days of school to see how many kids are eating breakfast and if they can eat in there, or we just may have them grab-and-go and eat in their first-period class. Again, their lunches will consist of a hot, cold, or salad lunch choice. They will enter the café food line, practicing social distancing, receive their pre-boxed choice with lunch, milk, vegetable, and fruit. And again, they'll have à la carte menu items pre-wrapped. They will use their school ID to bring up the student's account, no use of the keypad. And again, we ask that they either use the myschoolbucks.com app or parents kind of throw money in their child's account so they can get their food. Again, they will sit in the cafeteria. Obviously, the monitors and cafeteria aids will help students to available seats. Again, we'll space the trash out so there's very little movement. Masks, again, must be worn by students until they are seated. It's more so of an issue up here, because we do have some large lunch populations. Again, if the weather is nice, we'll get them outside, but we do also have two extra areas that we can overs, you know, that if we have a highly populated lunch, that we can separate them. And again, that's what it says here. Obviously, during a hybrid model, students will be afforded the opportunity to take home meals for the days they will not be in attendance. So a student may be who attends on Mondays and Wednesdays will take home meals for Thursday, Tuesday, and Thursday, and Friday. These meals will be picked up in the cafeteria and distributed to the elementary school at the end of the day. So just, again, other things that we have to make part of our guidance. Human resources, we had to include some hiring protocols, some absentee protocols. Currently, right now, we're working with our school attorneys due to possible accommodations for at-risk employees with underlying medical conditions or who possibly have household members with underlying health conditions, and what accommodations we need to provide them. We ask that the employees contact their immediate supervisor to initiate the discussion. And again, these are the questions that should guide those discussions. How does the disability create a limitation? How will the requested accommodation address the limitation? Is there another form of accommodation that could effectively address the request? How will the proposed accommodation enable the employee to continue performing the essential function of their job? And is the requested accommodation reasonable, or will it create an undue hardship? One of the concerns that all the superintendents have in the region is, obviously, with families saying that their child is not coming back, but we're also concerned that there may be some employees and teachers and support staff that will do the same. So we just need to be proactive in trying to support and help them through this process. Couple extra human resources things, student teaching. So, safety drills. Safety drills should be performed in conjunction with social distancing to mitigate the spread of infectious disease within reason. We are still required to have our safety drills. Really, the only difference is that when we do have a lockdown drill, that will be more of a, of an explanation than actually doing. During a lockdown, teachers are to lock their doors, you know, shut their lights off, and everybody's to pile in the corner on top of each other. That can't happen. So there'll be a combination for the... So there'll be accommodations for those types of drills. You know, we're still kind of tongue-in-cheek laughing at the fire drills and how do you still social distance the kids? But the guidance came back, and we said, well, if the kids are up and they're leaving the building, they should have their masks on, so then the social distancing doesn't become an issue. So the fire drill should look normal, but again, we'll certainly be in compliance with We'll update all of our safety and wellness plans, the code of conduct, our attendance So some health and safety protocols. Okay, obviously, we will provide our staff acceptable face covering. The face coverings do need to cover the nose and mouth. Again, I will assume that most employees, teachers, and staff will have their own, but we certainly need to provide them, you know, a supply if they ask. Homemade, sewn, quick-cut bandanas are acceptable, but again, they must cover both the mouth and nose. We will provide information and training to staff and students on how to properly use, remove, and wash cloth face coverings. Basically, according to the executive order, any individual who is over the age of two and can medically tolerate a face covering should wear one. Okay? The district must allow students, faculty, and staff to use their own acceptable face covering as long as they cover both the nose and mouth area. Further, this guidance shall not prevent employees from wearing their personally own protective coverings as long as they adhere to the minimum standards of protection for the specific activity. The district may otherwise require employees to wear more protective PPE due to the nature of their work. Again, it's expected that all students and staff will supply their own mask and face coverings. The district will provide students and staff with acceptable face coverings at no cost if and when requested. We'll maintain an adequate supply of face coverings in case of replacements. And here's some guidance. The masks, when worn. Masks, cloth face coverings, or face shields must be worn to cover both nose and mouth when. Anytime personnel are less than six feet apart from one another upon entry to the building until arriving in your workspace, while in any common spaces, for example, time clocks at start and end of shifts, break rooms for lunches and breaks, supply closets, restrooms, hallways, copiers, when in tightly confined spaces occupied by more than one individual at a time, and when there is more than one occupant in a district vehicle. Again, the same goes for our employees. Really, if you're on your feet, you should have a mask on. Masks, you do not have to wear a mask when you are at least six feet of social distancing, and that can be maintained. In-person gatherings, when held in an open, well-ventilated space with appropriate social distancing. When dividers are utilized, masks are still recommended. So we are purchasing a handful of class dividers. We don't necessarily think that they're necessary because per the size of most of our elementary classrooms, we can socially distance and space out the students. We can also do that up here at the middle high school building. So basically, for the middle and high school students that are sitting at their desks, they can take their mask off during instruction and learning. There are certain situations where we will have dividers, but that is not going to be our be-all, end-all. I do know that there's other districts that are solely going to dividers based on their space. We just happen to have the luxury that our building and campus is big enough to hold our students. And when employees are in their normal workspace while observing social distancing or working alone within a workspace. So if a teacher doesn't have a class and they're in their classroom at their desk, you know, doing lesson planning, you know, maybe they're on the phone correcting papers, you know, eating lunch within their classroom, certainly they don't need a face mask. Okay? There's some exceptions to the mask face coverings, and obviously then the alternative is a face shield. Mask breaks, we need to denote when we'll give mask breaks. Obviously, those will come throughout the day. It's when students can be six feet apart and ideally outside, or at least with the windows open. Students should be able to take their mask off while sitting at classroom desks and maintaining six feet of distance between peers. Right now, at the middle high school, we have taken all of the classrooms and have social distanced the desks to six feet. We eliminated some desks, and currently, right now, the middle high school administration is just making sure that the class sizes are compatible for where those classes will be taught. There are a few that are over, and we'll be talking with those teachers of possibly either teaching here in the auditorium. We're setting up the library for actually two additional classrooms, or we can even use the community room. This is very important. All individuals in school facilities and on school grounds must be prepared to put on a face covering if another person unexpectedly cannot social distance, and for this reason, individuals, including students, must wear face coverings in common areas such as entrances, exits, lobbies, and when traveling around the school. However, whether this plan indicates a mask does not need to be worn in a given scenario. All employees reserve the right to wear a mask in a situation when they are not required. They also have the right to request those that they are interacting with to wear a mask along with them. All employees should be considerate of those who are wearing a mask and those who request that they put a mask on for their interaction. And again, we talked about the different uses of the PPE, just for speech therapy, you know, things like that. Teachers and support staff will reinforce proper hand hygiene, cough, sneeze, covering with all students. We will provide educational videos regarding hand washing, face mask protocol, and other public health measures will be utilized. We will have times more so at the elementary that will be designated on the schedule to take students out of the classroom to wash their hands. Obviously, before and after they eat snacks, you know, when they enter the classroom, toileting, sneezing, wiping, blowing noses, all of those types of things. Health monitoring is going to be very important. All right? The reason that we can come back and hopefully stay back is to make sure that we don't need to shut down. So health monitoring is going to be very, very important. Okay? We understand that it's not going to be possible to probably even get through the first few weeks without somebody having COVID-19 symptoms or even being indicated as having the coronavirus. That does not mean we need to shut down. The guidelines have changed. What we're going to do, all in our power, to number one, reduce that risk, but number two, be able to make sure and identify the people that could be affected by that. A fever is technically defined as a body temperature of 100.4 degrees. You'll see regulations that will say 100. This is the Department of Health, which is 100.4. Knowing that those infrared thermometers have about a degree source of error, and we hear that they're about 10% reliable. So again, just another hurdle and challenge that we have to, that we have to fight. Okay? And again, that fever temperature is consistent for both children and adults. Basically, what we are going to say to our faculty and staff is, if you don't feel well, stay home. Okay? And we need for the parents to understand that if your kid does not feel well, keep them at home.
Does Steve give you any idea of reducing the hours of attendance?
Chronic absenteeism, all of that?
Yes.
Yeah, we have a protocol and a plan for that. This document actually outlines what employees and students need to do to return to school. So, you know, it could be up to 14 to 20 days that someone could be out of school. For students, that's when we would switch into remote learning if, for some reason, they're quarantined. For our employees, again, that's something that they fall under, you know, if they're forced to be quarantined or they're caught with this, then we have to work with, you know, CDC and, you know, the Department of Health on their return back to work. Okay? Here, we talk about what the symptoms are. We will say that if our employees believe they are experiencing symptoms, stay home. All right? And again, every employee, we'll have to kind of answer the questions, sign off, and get their temperature checked before reporting to work. Okay? These are the questions that they will answer to. And any employee who responds yes to any of those health screening questions are expected to leave the building. Again, if someone is suspected of having COVID, our recommendation would be to go see your, you know, primary care physician and get tested. We cannot force that, but there's guidelines in here of what they need to do if they're not to go get tested, how they return to work. We call these positive screen protocols. Please understand that schools cannot diagnose cases of COVID, but any individual who screens positive for COVID-19 exposure or symptoms, if screened at school, must be immediately sent home with instructions to contact their healthcare provider for assessment and testing. Students who are being sent home because of a positive screen, and that could just be a high temperature, or they have trouble breathing, or they're constantly coughing, must be immediately separated from other students and supervised until their parent, legal guardian, or emergency contact can retrieve them from school. The guidance states that we need an isolation room in each one of our buildings. Those isolation rooms have already been designated, so we need to keep the sick students away from the healthy students. So if the nurses screen a student or even employee at that time and feel that they need to go home or they have symptoms, we need to isolate them. Okay? So basically, the next couple pages outline the plan for when a staff member, student, or visitor becomes sick. Okay? Again, we're really just abiding by the CDC guidelines. I don't necessarily think I need to go through all of this. Again, this will be posted on the website by the end of this week, but it just really kind of outlines what employees and students must do. Okay? Obviously, we have protocols and procedures for cleaning and disinfecting suspected or confirmed COVID-19 cases. There's certain things that we must do in accordance with the CDC guidelines in making sure that we clean and disinfect those areas. All right? Again, plans for returning to school. Basically, if we send students home or an employee home to return back to work or return back to school, they will need to follow the CDC guidelines. Again, I don't necessarily think I need to explain all of this. A lot of this is just the testing protocols. This is assuring that we will be part of the tracing support. Obviously, confidentiality is a big concern. One of the responses that we received back and one of the topics that the superintendents discussed was, so what if an employee doesn't feel well and gets tested, and now they test positive for COVID? So who do you notify? All of the students that that teacher instructs? Do you notify really the whole teaching staff? Because I'm sure that teacher was hanging around with their colleagues. Do you notify the kids next door? What if a student is, you know, tested positive for COVID? Do you notify all the teachers of that kid? The issue comes in is that we really need to turn this over to the CDC and their tracing guidelines, because obviously confidentiality is a huge issue. We can't let parents or, you know, kids or even employees know of who the person is. And so we had someone comment, oh, are we going to get the garden variety? Your child may have been exposed to strep throat, and then you just leave it at that. So it's, that's something that we kind of laugh at, but it's not funny. And so really, the guidance and the direction is going to come from the Department of Health.
The ones identified, it's in their hands.
It's in their hands. Correct. Correct. They will also make the determination based on the situation if we need to shut down, if we need to go to a hybrid model or completely remote. It will really be out of our hands. So if I could stress that enough, it is very important to make sure that if you're not feeling well, please don't report to work. We need to make sure that, you know, this building, we will do our best to disinfect and clean it, but it's up to the people that are in this building on a daily basis to look out for one another and make sure that we can stay open. The school nurse plays a huge role in talking with the school physicians and managing and preventing and reducing, you know, these health issues. So we will be discussing with the nurses, the protocols, and the procedures. If a student comes down and is not feeling well, there's a page of questions they need to ask either the student or the employee, and there's some, you know, temperature checks and things they need to go through to confirm or not confirm, you know, symptoms of COVID. Again, we can't diagnose, but it really will come down to a nurse's call on that, so they have a lot of guidance to look over. Social distancing, again, social distancing is six feet of distance between individuals. It is almost impossible to social distance in schools, and I know a lot of schools cannot reopen because of that. Again, I think we are in a good spot that our protocols and procedures allow for our kids to return as long as they follow these strict directives. There are schools that can't distance their kids six feet apart in the classrooms, and they said that we can't reopen because we can't expect our kids to wear a mask for seven and a half hours. I agree. I absolutely agree, but we're in that situation where we can social distance our desks, and kids can be six feet apart in the classroom, and they are able to take their masks off. Unfortunately, if they get up to sharpen their pencil, they got to put their mask on, but we can social distance our kids. Again, if social distancing cannot happen, that is the reason for wearing the masks. Okay? So when students are traveling in the hallways, to the bathrooms, to different classes, when they're up, their masks are on. Again, seating desks will be spaced at least six feet apart, or if the size of the classroom is not indicative, seating will be spaced to the greatest extent possible, and masks will be worn by students and staff. That is rarely going to happen. One of the things that I think teachers and staff need to understand is that probably during instruction, they'll be wearing the face shield or the mask and not the students, because the teachers obviously are walking around, they're assisting students, they're doing most of the talking, and so when they're up and they're standing and they're instructing, that is the reason why we also bought them a few different types of face shields, because it's very hard to talk with face masks on. We are going to remove any extra and unnecessary furniture from the classrooms to create the maximum space. Currently, right now, if you look at one of our classrooms, the first row of desks are up against the front of the classroom wall, so a kid is really looking at a wall. It's unfortunate, but, you know, that's how we need to space the students out. It's unfortunate, um, but, you know, that's how we need to space the students out. It's very, very different. Again, students will be seated at individual desks to the maximum extent possible. All student furniture will be positioned to face in the same direction. Individualized seating from other buildings will be used to replace multi-student seating such as tables and chairs to the maximum extent possible. If tables must be used, only two per table sitting at maximum distance apart from one another, students at tables must wear masks. We're also getting, um, a sample of those partitions, more so for the elementary, that if students are working with, uh, teachers or, you know, working in pods, we'll have those dividers. Okay? Again, we are using alternative spaces in our school, the cafeteria, the library, the auditorium, the community room. Um, we will repurpose them to increase the amount of available space to accommodate the maximum distance possible. Elementary student groups. To minimize the number of students who would potentially be exposed in the event of a COVID-19 event, our elementary school should aim, and I know they will, to keep students in the same group throughout the day. And really, the definition of a cohort, um, will divide students into smaller groups that remain with each other throughout the day. So they'll eat together, they'll go to specials, phys ed, um, and we'll look for ways to isolate cohorts of students and prevent intergroup contact to the extent feasible. I'm thinking about the use of the playground. You know, I, I'm sure we'll have discussions, um, with the teachers and administration of maybe signing out the playground at certain times so we can disinfect and clean it when a cohort of kids go out there and, and uses it. The days where two or three teachers take their classes out there and there's 60 kids running around cannot happen.
Service delivered too, right? There are like speech services and things like that, that's going to be RTI things.
Correct. 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 It's going to look very different.
Yeah.
Right? It is recommended that a distance of 12 feet in all directions be maintained between individuals when participating in activities that require projecting a voice, playing an instrument, or any aerobic activities. I don't, I don't want to say this sarcastically, but take a phys ed class, um, all I can think of is kids just standing 12 feet apart, doing some Tabata exercises, and unfortunately, I don't want to say this, but it, but it's, you know, there's no, there's no team sports. There's no playing basketball, there's no playing volleyball, um, you know, none of the, you know, handball, dodgeball. It's really going to be some individualized things that, um, phys ed teachers are going to have to get very creative with. Band and chorus are going to look very different. We cannot have our band of 25 students practicing on the station. It's going to be small groups, small lessons. We can't have a middle, high school chorus practicing here onstage with 40 people.
But they spread out.
They could spread out, you know, the 12 feet and sing throughout the whole auditorium. We're just going to have to get very creative. Please understand that we do not want to eliminate or say we can't do that. We're just going to have to get very creative. And, you know, I don't know about the concerts. That's probably not something that we could have in the fall. I think guidance is going to come out, um, daily and weekly as we reopen. But, you know, we want to make these things work, although they're going to look very different, um, because, again, we don't want to use the word can't in this district. We just, we want to make sure that somehow we offer up these opportunities. We talk about extracurricular and interscholastic sports. Obviously, interscholastic sports at this time has been delayed till September 21st. We will follow that guidance. As far as extracurricular activities, um, and I'll get, get it, get to it in a second. We want our extracurricular activities to run. However, we also need to be very cognizant of the ones that, um, like, almost have to run. I'm thinking of National Junior Honor Society or AG. Um, you know, there, there are clubs that absolutely have to run. And then there's clubs that, while we love to have them, um, we may have to set some limitations on them. Again, we're talking about personal belongings. One of the things that I've been discussing with Lynn and Matt is, do we change our protocols and procedures regarding backpacks, more so up here at the middle, high school? A lot of schools don't want students going to their lockers. So Matt and I have had some extensive conversations and, and of course, you know, five years ago, oh, no kid, we want to be able to see what you're carrying and no backpacks and no coats. Well, I think things have flipped now where we want kids to pack all their stuff up in a backpack and just go from class to class and not hang out in the hallways and be at their lockers. So those are one of the protocols that will come down the line in the next few weeks that we're just working on. Again, more so at the elementary, um, we need containers labeled. Think of an art teacher and think of a first grade class or think of a first grade teacher with all their supplies at a table and the sharing of glue sticks and crayons and scissors. That cannot happen. So we're going to have to have individual, you know, containers and baggies for these students to have their own materials. We're going to avoid sharing electronic devices, the toys, the books, you know, other games and learning aids. You know, we will have adequate supplies, um, you know, the art supplies, music equipment, general classroom supplies, um, but again, we're going to try to limit that by cohort or by a group, um, and clean and disinfect in between the use. Okay? Again, signage will be all over the building. We talked this morning about having, um, you know, the easels down the hallways every, you know, 20 feet. Where's, you know, put your mask on, put your mask on, just constant reminders. And I honestly think that it will probably take us a good week or two weeks to, you know, train our students, um, in, in wearing their mask, you know, when they're supposed to. It's, it's going to be a lot. So we have some contingency plans for closure. Again, we will follow the Department of Health. This includes contingency plans, protocols, and procedures for decreasing the scale or scope of in-person education or closing the school. I will tell you this, that because our end goal is to be here in person 100%, um, we talked about when would the need be to have hybrid? I don't know. I, I don't think that if the CDC or Department of Health came in here and said, you know what, you're here all the time, go to hybrid, I think they're either going to come in and say, continue what you're doing, or they're going to shut you down. So, um, we could go from 100 to zero very, very quickly. So again, we'll follow Genesee County Department of Health as far as our operational activity. And again, we have a communication system to let everybody know. Here's some websites to the signs that we're going to use. Again, we're limiting building access to visitors. We're going to have the staff screen, um, before leaving for work. We are going to restrict the use of building requests to outside companies. The guidance has said it's really at the district level. We will vet those, um, those building use forms. I'm not so concerned about the fields and things that are outside. I'm more concerned about the things within the building of having outside companies or, you know, outside people using our facilities. Number one, um, you know, Jordan's Night Crew is going to be very busy disinfecting this place for the following day. And, uh, you know, we are really trying to shut down the buildings by four o'clock. We had discussions today about, um, when the middle, high school leaves and the elementary may have some extracurricular classes going on, that the buildings are locked by four. We don't want anybody sticking around unless there's a need to have some sort of activity in, in the evenings. We don't really need or want anybody here so we can properly disinfect and clean these buildings. But, but again. What's that?
Teachers would have to be banned.
We didn't really talk about teachers. It was more so of like activities and events. I mean, if a teacher wanted to stay in their classroom and, you know, work on things, I don't have a problem with that. But it's, we just, we don't want kids hanging around here. It's not going to be an open campus, like if you pulled up here at six o'clock and, you know, I mean, we're not going to have sports practices until at least the 21st. So there's really no need for anybody to be here. So. Again, more so at the elementary, we'll be building some traffic patterns, um, you know, one-way, one-way streets, so to say. You know, we will have tape down in the hallways, state of the right. It's one of those things that we will just train our students to do, and they must abide by those. Obviously, student flow, entry, exit, and comment areas. Once again, this is something that we'll have to monitor when the buses pull up. When the buses pull up in the back of the middle, high school building after the first run, we will unload the buses and students will be directed to certain entrances. Um, there's an entrance by Mr. Hoffheim's room, um, over in the AG wing. There's one where the students normally come in, and then there's also an entrance down where the old Buildings and Grounds office is in. Um, we'll have to work to kind of disperse the students into those three, um, areas. And that could be just by middle school kids using an exit and freshmen and sophomores and juniors and seniors using another exit. We're going to have to talk about, again, at the elementary building, um, how are we dropping students off, unloading the buses, and then the parents and guardians unloading their students? Again, that is something that we will figure out within the next few weeks and get that information, um, to our community members. More so at the elementary building, we even talked about the possibility of, um, teachers changing classes and not the students. Not that that's an answer, not that that's a decision, but those are the types of things that we need to research and figure out, you know, what's, what's best for education and what's best for our students and staff. Again, these are just the building protocols that we have in place. Faculty and staff meetings. Um, I talked about this to our administration, that the last thing we want to do is get our faculty and staff in, in a large group. So is there stuff that you can do, um, you know, over email, video conferencing, teleconferencing, you know, stuff like that? Uh, do you do it in pods? Maybe, uh, take your staff meeting and go outside. Those are the types of things that we really need to, you know, to be cognizant of. We talked about attendance protocols, Pete. Here's a whole thing on attendance. We still need to, no matter what model we are in, um, we still need to report attendance. But there's, there's those exceptions where if a student is, you know, testing positive for COVID, that technically doesn't count against them. We'll have to kick in the remote learning, those types of things. If, you know, they have to self-quarantine, maybe they didn't get a test, but they have the symptoms, they have to self-quarantine for two weeks. And there's, um, guidelines of when they can return. Um, those 10 days are just noted differently in school tool, you know, given this pan done. So, um, we have protocols for that. Again, just ideas for reducing density, um, so we can social distance. We're going to have to ensure that students and families are educated and engaged in the new expectations, um, related to our health policies and protocols. Through that parent square, we will be sending home, uh, training videos. There's a minute and a half training video on how to use a thermometer. That's required by the state that we send that out to our parents. We obviously run, you know, the Healthy Kids YMCA after-school care programs. They are subject to the same procedures as, as we are. So when those, when those, um, after-school programs run, please understand that they have a copy of our protocols and procedures and probably more so are more stringent with their protocols. So when we talk about arrival and dismissal, the middle, high school building will open at 7:20 a.m. for the arrival of students. No earlier. What I can say, last year, when I got here between 6:30 and 6:45, I called them my breakfast club kids, there were a handful of kids that were just in the front foyer, just hanging out. And the inside doors would open up at 7:15. Kids cannot be waiting inside that front foyer. These buildings will be locked. The middle, high school building will be locked to 7:20. So if I could let parents know now, if a child is walking, if you're dropping them off and it's 6:45, they don't have shelter. So on a rainy day, they will not be able to get into the front foyer. We cannot have students in this building before 7:20. So that's just going to be something that we're going to have to get that information out. The elementary building will be open at 8:30 for the arrival of students. When reporting to campus, all parents and students are required to wear a face covering when exiting their vehicle. So if a parent is dropping off their student and the student gets out of the vehicle, when they are on campus, they must have a face covering on. Students upon arrival on campus and outside waiting for the school buildings to open must have a mask on, and they must keep it on until they report to their first period class and are seated at the desk. Again, if you're on your feet, you're wearing a mask. When you're on campus, you're wearing a mask. The reason that is very important is I can foresee a handful of students at 7:10 hanging out front on campus in, in a group, just chilling and talking to each other. That cannot happen. The only way we can police that is that we ask them that they please have a mask on.
How much of that job is that under discretion? How much of that are you just compelled to provide?
Our campus is our responsibility. And so you have a group of kids standing outside waiting to get into school, and there's 40 of them waiting for that door to open, and they don't have their masks on, and someone takes a picture and posts it to social media. We're going to get in trouble. We'll have a lot of questions to answer.
Do you think all of these types of mask policies are only going to be the same for the school?
Yes. 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 I'd be very surprised if they aren't. I will tell you that a lot of this guidance, again, while some of it is descriptive to what we're doing here, a lot of it, again, is just reassuring the state that we're going to do what they ask. A lot of this is copied and pasted and looks very similar district to district. You know, um, obviously, we tweaked it and added our own, you know, stuff to it, but a lot of this, there isn't a lot of wiggle room for, for our own decisions. Again, parent drop-off pickup will be designated in the front loop of the middle, high school building for middle and high school students. Social distancing protocols and the wearing of masks will be enforced upon entering the school building. The elementary drop-off will be designated at the side of the elementary building next to the bus garage. Again, this is the stuff that we need to monitor, that we need to review, um, and these are the questions that we don't have the answers for yet. You know, the administrative team is meeting almost daily to try to work these things out. But, but I will tell you, um, that, again, we're not settling for the word can't. We'll, we'll figure it out. My concern is, is that I think that the community will certainly, certainly step up to the plate and help us out with driving their own kids or making them walk to school. I'm waiting for 300 kids to be out front waiting to get in the front door there on the first day of school because the parents said, hey, I thought you needed help with transportation, so we drove our kids. So, um, you know, those are the types of things that we're just going to have to monitor and deal with, um, each and every day. Again, we're going to limit before and after-school activities to ensure time for daily sanitizing. You know, all teachers will monitor students' use of lockers at both arrival and dismissal. Um, if parents are signing out at a time other than arrival or dismissal, the procedure will take place in a specified location based on purpose. I know Lynn is currently looking at what the protocol is for parents to pick up their children. I've been over there last year where you have 20 to 25 parents in the main office just waiting to pick up their kids, and all the kids come down into the main office. That can't happen anymore. Um, so we're trying to. Um, so we're trying to devise a plan. Lynn's got some great ideas of how that may work. Um, we're also looking at, maybe it isn't also at dismissal time when the buses are there. Again, those are the questions and the answers that we need to figure out and provide. Um, and once finalized, we'll get that out to the families, but, you know, there's a lot that goes, that goes into this. Again, we're gonna ask school personnel to, you know, check their rooms, make sure they have masks, they have tissues, hand hygiene, cleaning supplies, et cetera. We'll supply all that. Again, um, the big thing with the elementary school is the cohorts. The drinking fountains will only be where you can fill them up per the bottle. You know, again, there'll be different protocols and procedures in sanitizing, you know, the bathrooms, um, all of that stuff. And once we get moving here, I know Jordan will have the buildings and grounds crew really, really on, on top of all that. Again, markings will be all over the buildings regarding hall traffic. And again, masks must be worn at all times by students and staff when they're in the halls. PE, library, art, and music. Again, for those large groups, they're talking, the guidance is 12 feet of social distancing. So again, we need to be very, um, cognizant of that and think outside the box of how those classes are going to run. Outside space and playground. We do not want to close our playgrounds. Again, we don't want to limit what we have here for our students, but we also wanna maintain, you know, the health and safety and wellness of, of the students and staff. So again, we'll have to have protocols, um, in the near future about using the playground, the fitness equipment, and again, ensuring only, you know, team cohort uses it at the same time, that they wash their hands before and after, and that we're able to, you know, clean and wipe down those equipments before another group comes in. And again, the stagnant recess times, um, for the classes is really important. We need to keep in mind that we are here for academics and that all our classes are, um, obviously in line and, uh, are in line with the New York State standards, the standards in curriculum, all of that stuff, um, won't change. Um, I would let the board know that I honestly don't think real instruction's gonna take place within the first month of school. I think this is gonna be, um, a new environment. There's gonna be a lot of social, emotional, um, discussions and supports, and, um, we need time. We need time to get back. And, um, it's, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a lot. It really is, um, for both students and staff. These are just reassurances that, um, we won't have any academic gaps and interventions, that we basically have equity for all in regards to providing instruction. So I wanna talk about instructional models, because this is the big thing that, um, districts are starting to now release. An in-person model, unless family choose to learn remotely, 100% of staff and students will attend school in the physical building for a full day on each scheduled school day, and instruction will be delivered in traditionally scheduled courses, subject areas, with established precautions for maintaining health and safety. That is what our goal is. That is what Oakfield's vision is come September. We will have social distancing measures in place, and masks are to be worn as our guidelines outline. Our instructional programs will maintain their current integrity. This is what our model is. We also need to include a hybrid model. Um, students will be back in school with an altered schedule to reduce student population within the building. Again, the protocols are the same. You're just really at 50% capacity. Using this model, students will be actively involved in the school learning environment in a smaller group setting. Students would attend school in person for a portion of the week, and the rest of the time, they would engage in remote instruction. If we need to operate under a hybrid model, um, if we have, if we are forced and have to go there, we will use the 2-2-1 model. In all hybrid models, high-need students, we have to take into account our special ed, um, our ELLs, some of our high-risk students, we will still make them attend in-person Monday through Friday. We have the capacity to do that. The hybrid models, we have a lot of flexibility on what that looks like. And so, um, while, um, we would have students in, in probably two different cohorts attending days, we would certainly, you know, take care of our at-risk, high-need, and, and our, um, ELLs. Okay? Obviously, we will make sure and make every effort to keep students in the same family, in the same cohort. So we don't want to tell a seventh grader, "You're coming Monday, Wednesday," but their 12th grade sister, "You're coming Tuesday, Thursday." So we'll certainly make, you know, accommodations for that. So here are some options. If we went with hybrid option number one, the elementary, students pre-K through five will attend school in person still, Monday through Friday. So really, under this hybrid, we can still have our elementary students attend school every single day. And we do think that's important for those lower, for those lower grades. The reason being, we have this luxury that we are able to social distance and maintain less than 50% occupancy capacity for each classroom when all the students are in attendance. So that's very helpful. This hybrid option one really falls down to the middle high school. Each class section would be divided in half. Half of each class section will attend in-person two days per week, either on Monday, Wednesday, or Tuesday, Thursday, while the other half receives remote instructions. All students will participate in remote instruction on Fridays. Um, the student cohort groups will be based upon last name. Cohort A will consist of students with last names A through M. Cohort B will consist of students with last names N through Z. And here would be their, um, in-person learning days and remote learning days. Students attending remotely will connect with their classes via Google Meet or Google Classroom in a synchronous and/or asynchronous manner. Friday, all students will be involved in asynchronous learning opportunities. Teachers will use these days to provide support to students on an individual and/or small group basis. Again, to ensure equity for all, limited selected groups of students, maybe students that don't have internet, students who are in need of extra support, would be provided the opportunity to talk, to come to campus. Um, we'll also provide busing for them on Fridays, when nobody's here, for internet access or instructional support services. The hybrid option two now includes the elementary, and again, they would be, um, kinda split up in the same, same cohorts and in the same manners. And then we, we talked about Fridays. I am hoping that we don't have to go to that model. The remote model is basically the students are not attending school in the physical building. We have structures and expectations for the hybrid remote learning. We are going to one platform, which was a huge, huge piece of feedback we received about, um, remote learning. You know, I know Rob is here. He sent out, um, a survey to all of the families in regards to what worked, what didn't work, um, what went well, what didn't go well, in regards to, um, this past spring. So we took a lot of that feedback, and one of the big feedback, um, was, can you, can you have one source of information and platform for students, you know, and parents? And, um, we are doing that. I know Rob is currently working on plans to provide educational videos for parents, because a lot of the parents said, "Hey, listen, I can't, I don't know where to find this stuff, and I, I can't help my child, and it'd be great if, if I knew some of these things." So, um, down the road, we're gonna be providing snippets and, and training materials for parents as well.
John, the 2-2-1 model?
Yes.
The kids are remote, are those watching in the classroom every day?
That is something that, again, we need to work out. In a perfect world, we would say to students, "Please be synchronous." Where the teacher is teaching their first period class to half their kids at 7:35 in the morning, we hope the kids that are remote got out of bed at 7:34 and linked on, and they're, they're synchronous. Those are the types of things that we need to work out. We need to figure out.
Do you see why teachers would have time to make another recording?
Well, we also need to talk to the teachers about recording their classes, because you're gonna have kids that are remote that don't have internet access. So how do they have access to the class that, that they missed? They, they can't be synchronous. So, um, we're trying to devise up plans that, um, kinda mitigate those issues, where maybe, um, teachers can take their lesson or their videos and then upload it to, we talk about Zephyr, and then getting those out to the kids that don't, I mean, again, those are the things that we don't have the answers to. I know that it can't look like it did this past break. So, um, you know, those are questions that we just don't have the answers to. I know a lot of districts talked about, if we are completely remote, in a perfect world, we would say, have the teachers teach from their classrooms every day and let it be live. And if I had a math class at 7:35, I'm getting up and clicking the link, and there's my teacher, and here we go. That would be the perfect solution in a perfect world. We know that's not gonna happen. So how do we reach those families and those kids that don't do that, or don't show up, or don't have internet? And what, what is the expectation of our, of our teachers? It's, there, there's no trail to follow. We, we don't have those answers. So, um... Well, we have, and, and I was just about to say, we have the technology. You know, I talk to, you know, my friends in schools and, "Hey, what are you doing and what happens here?" And we are in a very good spot to, um, more so than probably any other district that, that I've been in contact with, with the one-to-one Chromebooks and the technology that we have in this district. We can almost make anything work. It's trying to find that healthy balance of what is doing. But, you know, we are certainly ahead of the game if we ever have to go to hybrid or, you know, the remote learning. And again, um, the communication protocols for the students and families. We mentioned that we're going to the Google Classroom, and we also went to one communication board called Parent Square. And again, there's, there's training that needs to be provided, um, for our staff, um, to be able to use that. This Parent Square is absolutely brand-new. We were just trained a few weeks ago on it as administrators. I think it absolutely does the job. Um, I know Rob's been testing it out, and it seems to be working. But there's a lot that, um, we need to not only share with the staff, but share with, you know, the families of how it actually works. Um, I'm sure you get the notifications, but, um, you probably don't really know where they're coming from or, or through what source. So a lot of that training needs, needs to happen. And again, um, this just talks about the definition of the terms, a lot of academics, um, using video conferencing, um, supporting the, um, the diverse learners. We talk about, um, providing our IEP and special ed services, the evaluations and, and child find, the accommodations, the modifications, the IEP meetings. All of this, again, is mandated by the state that we continue on with those services. Communication, um, the use of one-to-one aids. This more so is, is protecting a lot of our one-to-one aids, um, our, our, you know, handling students. We need to make sure that they're protected, that they have gloves, they have aprons, they have face guards, face masks, all of those, um, types, types of things. And, and again, development of online learning for special education instruction and related services, you know, the teletherapy, all of those stuff need to be a part of our plan. We need to assure, ensure that our English, English language learners and our families that, um, English is a second language, that all our communication to them, um, is in their dominant language. Real quick about the athletic and extracurricular activities that I've mentioned. Um, as far as the athletics go, we just kinda follow, um, the National Federation of High School Sports and, um, their recommendations for seasonal play. I will tell you that, um, we'll follow that guidance, that if we're able to have the fall sports and we're able to play, um, we'll be ready to go. But again, that's nothing that we have any control over at all. Um, they talk about offseason training program, that there's, uh, three phases to it. That's a part of our plan here. They talk about the different types of practices. Practices will happen, and again, um, we'll follow their guidelines into what's acceptable and what is not. Um, if we're in a hybrid mode, we would certainly still have, um, you know, the sports and extracurriculars. If we're remote, they're gonna shut everything down, basically. And again, just the protocols for the games and contests. The one thing I do wanna mention in here that's a part of their guidance is during games and contests, they only allow two spectators per athlete in a socially distanced manner. If we do have fall sports and they are here on campus, we are liable to make sure that we follow the guidance. So it's more important for, again, our chaperones to make sure that, you know, if there's a, talking about flipping season, if there's a fall softball game and there's 50 parents there and they're all huddled in the stands, um, that's a no-no. So, uh, again, we, we need to enforce these rules and regulations, which is tough. It's tough on any given day. Again, talk about the locker rooms, the fitness room. Locker rooms right now are only used for athletics. Um, we do not wanna be sharing equipment, anything like that. Obviously, the pool has been closed. Um, until we receive guidance that we can fully reopen, for the most part, our school facilities are, are closed. Talking about extracurricular activities, um, our extracurricular activities will be functioning at the beginning of the school year based on essential purpose. So our goal is to open up and have things run as, as normal. We will provide an extracurricular activity bus run, um, after school. What happened last year was that if there were meetings here after school, then the high school kids after their meeting would walk over to the elementary building and hop on the elementary bus run. We can't do that anymore, um, with the new transportation. So we will provide an extra bus when we know that there's extracurricular meeting or an activity going on. I spoke to Matt, and he's gonna have to talk with his advisors on not having two or three clubs have their meetings on the same day. Try to space them, space them out. So the middle high school students will not be riding the elementary bus run. We'll provide a separate run home. Um, again, there'll be no extracurricular activities after 4:00 p.m. in either building. And then extracurricular activities that are deemed with an essential purpose will only, will occur only during the in-person learning model. They will not occur in hybrid or remote learning models. Um, and, and again, I'm hoping that we never have to, have to, you know, um, go to that. And then, really, this last part is huge, uh, as far as our social, emotional learning guidelines. I'm pleased to announce, like I said, that we do have, um, our mental health satellite office that will certainly be, you know, in good use come the fall. We'll get that up and running. Our counselors are writing out plans currently to help deal with students and, and even our staff. We have resources for our staff. We need to make sure our staff is healthy and well before they can make sure that our students are healthy and well. Um, so we'll provide those supports. And really, it's just recognizing that, um, it's, it's gonna look very different. And these kids are gonna come back with a lot of questions, um, a lot of emotions, um, and so is our staff. So we need to be cognizant of all that. We're gonna update our K through 12 school, um, sorry, school counseling plan. We are a part of the TIG, which is the Trauma Illness and Grief Consortium. Certainly, there are a reach out. And again, these are just considerations once the school year begins and conversations we're gonna start having, you know, with our students. You know, if we have to do small groups, some orientation, you know, things like that, um, we really need to spend... we really need to spend probably the first month just having these discussions. You know, as much as academics are a part of this, again, learning's not going to take place if our kids and our staff don't feel comfortable. We have our counselors, our psychologists. They'll provide the mental health and counseling services. Again, just some questions. And then, we actually had to designate some COVID-19 safety coordinators for any concern or issue that we had. And so I'm certainly one of the safety coordinators, our two nurses. And then Mr. Montroy, who is also our district safety leader, is another safety coordinator for people to reach out to. And after 68 pages, that is our plan. And again, I want, I want to mention that this is a bird's-eye view. For the most part, it's reassuring the state that we will follow the guidelines. Once I submit this by the end of the week, I'm hopeful for a week turnaround. I expect that it will not be approved for one reason or another. It'll be a quick fix, or I forgot this, or, you know, figure out that. And usually, when something's not approved, they're all not approved within the region. And so we figure out, oh, what we need to say and do, and hopefully, it'll be approved. I can't imagine somebody there seeing 700 of these, coming at them from the 700 districts in New York State that are 70, 80, 90 pages long and nitpicking at this stuff. I just can't imagine. Again, next week, the timeframe is that we should get the thumbs up from the governor based on our data and our, you know, COVID spread, that we're good. And we have a couple of meetings with the task force on those Monday evenings. And I'll report back to you at our next board meeting. As you know, that our plan will be to go back 100% and review some of the other protocols and procedures that we have in place. And we'll get that information out to district residents. And I'll keep informing them and communicating with them, and wish for the best. I will say this. I have a feeling that the governor is going to delay the opening school. I just, I have that feeling. The superintendents have been talking about it. School sports doesn't start till the 21st. I just can't possibly imagine, with the politics that are going on, that he's going to just, I don't know. I just don't know. I will tell you that it was very, very hard to craft this reopening plan. Because if you read the guidance, if you're seeing the news, if you're hearing what people are saying, it is so contradictory at times. It's very frustrating. And we had stuff in place, and then the following day, it changed. So we had to go back and revisit it, and it's very, very frustrating. And we never had to do this before. And I was in very good company with the other superintendents. But I will, I will tell you that it was, it's tough. There's still questions out there. There's still people wondering how to do this and do that. I think we're in a very good place. I will work with Rob to get this up on the website by the end of the week. I am ready to submit this tomorrow. And the rest of the portal is just assurances, and I'll double-check that our plan has those assurances. And we'll go from there. So we'll field questions, but again, you know, there's still a lot of groundwork that needs to be done. But again, that's, that's going to be just, it's going to be a working document. It really is. And we'll provide you a PowerPoint slide of the highlights of how things are going to run and things are going to work. Do we have all the answers? Absolutely not. We're doing the best we can, and things are going to be tweaked. You know, like I said, to have those kids come in that first Friday is going to tell us a lot. And within the first couple of weeks, we'll be changing things and rethinking things. But hopefully, eventually, for the most part, it works for OA, and that's the most important piece. Because there are, there are districts that unfortunately can't do what we can do because they're facing other hurdles and other obstacles. And I think we all need to be compassionate of that. Because I think everybody does want to be back in person. And honestly, it's the easiest plan to be back. I can't imagine trying to set up a plan for hybrid. I mean, we have a, we have a plan in place, but it's not something that I'd like to implement on. Are there any questions? Just the extra stuff that we're doing? I'd say probably close to hundreds of thousands of dollars. I know one district in particular spent $75,000 on the plastic dividers. That's similar to us. And I joked and said, well, jeez, that's also more clean, you know? It's, it's tough. And then you throw in the possibility that he also wants to cut 20% and, you know, I also heard that there's $10 billion, $10 billion worth of relief money coming to states for education. Right, we'll see about, we'll see about that. I also heard that this is very political in nature. And the 148 pages of guidance was really to make it very difficult for students to come back and for schools to reopen. And we joked about if you have to tell us in 148 pages our guidance, that's a problem. And we have to respond with a 70-page document, that's a problem. So it's going to, it's going to be very interesting moving forward. I know that whatever decision we decide to make, half the community will love us and half the community will hate us. We'll have the compliers, we'll have the enforcers, and then we'll have the deniers. And it's going to happen. Like I said, I would not be surprised within the first week if all of a sudden we get turned upside down because, you know, a student says they're sick and, you know, our isolation room has 500 kids, and I, you know, I just, we just don't know. And, you know, we're going to do the best we can, and again, we don't have all the answers. Part of my letter, it's just, we don't know. And it's frustrating when you don't know. The other concern in creating this is how specific do you get? You know, we, there are districts that were very specific. And I don't necessarily think at times you needed to get that specific. You know, do, you know, you put a diagram of the bus and say you're going to keep the kids socially distant, or they're going to wear masks, and this is what it looks like. But do I need, I mean, do I need to provide you of how the kids are going to enter in a room map? And, you know, there's just, and none of the superintendents know. We asked each other, how specific do you get? And we all looked at each other. Right. You know, do I need to tell them what type of thermometers we're using to check the kids? Like, how detailed and specific do you get? You know, I don't, I don't know.
Without creating a Bible, I mean, this is pretty.
So, yeah, so, once I receive feedback, we'll certainly make corrections. And I'm, I can't imagine, I can't imagine this, you know, passing the first time around. Like, even everyone's continuity learning plans all got kicked back because they added questions to it. So I wouldn't be surprised, you know, of getting feedback, and we'll fix that and resubmit. But, you know, the funny thing is, is that I don't have to resubmit it. They basically said, your plan is approved until it's not. But they wanted it as a working document. Because if they say, hey, put this in there, we'll just go ahead and put it in there. I won't have to say, okay, resend, because it's a working live document, and they have our link to it. So it's just, it's very interesting. Very, very interesting. I learned a lot. So.
I think you never have to use it.
Correct. Yeah, everything else is a piece of cake, so. But I just want to thank everybody that has input. And again, as far as our ground-level plans, you know, I'm excited to work with the administration, get a concrete plan projected, and then provide information and get feedback from the parents and the students and the teachers and the board members on what it actually looks like. Because I just did not want to go into saying, okay, we got to come up with a plan to reopen schools. Go, you know, I mean, obviously, there's very little wiggle room. There's things that we have to do. And now, now it comes down to, you know, the other decisions that we do have to make. And I'm looking forward to, you know, that feedback, but. Tiring. Very tiring. Time-consuming, so. Are there any other questions? So I would tell you to stay off of Facebook, and, but no. But, I mean, if you do hear things out in the community, I'm always available for questions. Again, this is a live document, it's already on the website. I'll submit this by the end of the week, and I'll just keep you posted. And we'll go from there. And know that timeline that I sent home in that letter, you know, we'll stick to that. And by the next board meeting, I'll have all the administration here. I mean, for the most part, Rob needs to be here, right? And I know Lynn's here, but I told the administrators, you know, don't come to this board meeting, get, keep working on this. The administrative team has been just unbelievable in working together because there's a lot of unknowns. And when we sit down every morning for two, three, four hours and hash things out, it's professional, the ideas that fly around are just, you know, just fabulous. And so I'm sure at the August 18th board meeting, when we're all standing here and have a plan to show you, you're going to see how good of a team, you know, they are. And we'll all be here for your questions, and we'll be here in full force to show our support in reopening.
Lynn, are you getting a lot of phone calls from the community, like, about reopening, or not really?
No. I think we're going to get more now with that, well, remote versus in-person for middle school model.
Sure.
One of the things that we are looking into, and we just wanted to kind of get a grasp on the numbers, is, you know, if we have a plan for hybrid and a plan for remote, but we want to be in-person, I have a feeling, and I've received probably twice as many homeschooling letters than usual, which is understandable. What about the families that say, hey, remote learning works? My kid loves it, it works. Why can't we do that? I don't necessarily want to say no. If there's some stipulations that we have, and it's, and if it's going to work, then the sky's the limit. So I wanted Matt to reach out to, you know, his building parents of, you know, are we talking five or 10 families, or are you talking 200? You know, obviously, in-person learning is the best, but, you know, if we have to prepare for, you know, a kid to be quarantined for 14 days and have to learn from home, well, what if it just works that, you know, that kid can succeed through remote learning? I don't want to throw that plan away. So that was the reason for his outreach, and we'll just see the type of numbers that we get back and see what we can do. So at this point, we're just not eliminating anything. And again, those discussions of, is that going to be completely synchronous learning? Where you understand if you do that, your kid's going to be on his Chromebook for eight hours a day. And, I mean, we can, we can force that. There's just a lot of, a lot of unknowns moving forward.
When you say, John, that you got more homeschooling opportunities, is that for people who are withdrawing from OA and going to enroll in a homeschool program?
Yep. Yeah, we usually have about, I'd say about 10 to 12 families. You know, probably up to 18 or 20. You know? Yeah, it's, it's huge in other districts. It really is. We discussed that too. And some superintendents are like, I'm getting letters left and right. And I said, yeah, we see a little bit of increase, and he's like, you know, we're talking 20% of the student population. That's wild, so.
So that's like simply not being your own role.
Correct. And the concern is, is that, you know, families didn't homeschool their kids in last break. Homeschooling is completely different. They're providing the lesson plans, they're grading their kids, they're abiding by the commissioner's regs, they're submitting assessments, they're doing the instruction. Really, there's no, no use for the district. And when, you know, my concern is parents are like, well, I'm just going to homeschool my kid. But then they don't follow through with the paperwork, and we're going to probably have to play catch-up with those families. Because it's not the same.
Has there been an uptick in people transferring to broken schools or private schools?
No. Because I'll be honest with you, private, they're going through the same thing we are. You know? You know, I, I, you know, I will be, I will be very interested, probably in the next month, if there's a wave of residents wanting to do something like that. You know, it'll be, it'll be interesting. Because as I mentioned to you, I was on a Zoom meeting with three other superintendents. We are the only four looking to fully reopen. And all of our differences, you know, all of our hurdles are very different. And they had asked me about using dividers as barriers. And I said, we don't have to, we can social distance. And the other two of the three superintendents said, if all of a sudden guidance comes out that the dividers aren't good enough, and you still have to social distance or wear masks, we're shutting down. Because they're putting all of their, you know, all of their gold in that basket that the dividers are going to work. And that doesn't even cross, you know, our minds here. And so we chatted, and we're all on the same page. We all read the guidance and, you know, have similar, similar expectations. But it's tough. The only one is just dealing with transportation issues, so.
If we have to do the hybrid model, is it possible to do that with the staff or? Because if you don't have it synchronous, it's like they have to do twice as much.
Well, and those are, those are questions that,
That's the reality.
Right. And those are questions that, you know, Connie led with Danelle, the, the group of what hybrid looks like. Because the teachers would still be here because half their kids would be here in, you know, in front of you learning. Now, does that mean that the following day, that teacher teaches the exact same lesson to the kids that weren't there? And then what's the expectation when the kids aren't in class? What are they doing remotely? Do you continue on and make sure that the kids that are remote can synchronize and, and, and be right there? And a kid that doesn't have internet, you say, okay, you just come every day? Those, those are questions that, you know, again, I don't, I don't have the specific answers to. And for a hybrid model for one teacher may look very different as a hybrid model for another teacher. And, you know, that's understandable based on, you know, how tech savvy they are, what their class is, how they wanna run things. You know, what do the Fridays look like? Because if nobody's here on a Friday, do we use that as, okay, the kids that are really struggling, you do come in and we'll get bussing and you sit down with them in person in your class? I, I don't have those answers. Some teachers would probably say, yes, I'd love them. Right. You know, and you have to, and you have to build that in too, that, you know, teachers need time to, you know, prep and, you know.
I'm trying to think if it's not synchronous, it's real tight, then you only cover half as much material in this school.
You'd have to deal with a lot. You'd have to deal with a lot.
Yeah.
So knowing that a majority of the districts are going back hybrid, the question is, geez, I wonder when they're gonna cancel the 3 through 8 assessments and the re-exam? You know? It's, I think that's the last thing at this point that you're worried about.
Well, it's a reality.
Right. So, you know, one of the jokes was, part of the guidance is to make sure that your APPER plan is all set and ready to go. And the super, and we all said, that is like the last thing that we should be worrying about right now. So, and, and I don't know about the union, but, you know, we joked about it and said, can we just get through like this part of it and kinda get up and running and then see where we're, you know, see where we land?
Yeah, because it's kinda hard to judge a teacher on their routine test courses. They only have opportunity to teach half as much.
Right. Again, that's not top of our list right now. It's just trying to reopen and do it safely. I would not be surprised if the news stations would hear the first day of school and the kids were. Because it's that just, it's that touching. I mean, it's on the news every single night about reopening. What's this and what's that? All of that. I will joke with you that I was concerned coming into school yesterday because there was a news station that said that you needed to wear masks and social distance. So now, so basically you're telling us that kids need to have their mask on for seven and a half hours. Like, what do you mean? They, like, it didn't make sense. Well, that was in reaction to, there was a handful of districts that turned in a half a page reopening plan and said, we'll have our kids wear masks and our employees wear masks all day long. We're back to normal. We can pile the buses full. Kids can have 25 to a class and we'll just, we don't need to do anything different because kids can wear masks. Because we can't social distance. And I think the state said, well, wait a second. At least you gotta abide, at least try to abide by these guidelines. So they kinda came out with these ands instead of ors. And the word should and recommended, does that actually mean we need to do it? You know? There's stuff in there that's required, but then it should said, well, students should wear masks when? Okay, does that mean they have to? That's, that's just the ambiguity in, in all of the stuff that, you know, we had questions about. And apparently the Department of Health trumps state ed, because they're the ones that are gonna come in and help us. But their guidelines sometimes don't line up with what the state wants you to line up with. So it's been quite eye open. That's all I have. So move to closing remarks. Pete, you have any closing remarks?
Just, yeah, it was great time, John.
I appreciate the administration's taking control of this and asking teachers to come up with a plan. It's nice that you guys are gonna hand something off and then continue to work on it until it's closed. So I appreciate the administration.
Tim, do you have any closing remarks?
Uh, no, I don't know.
Jackie?
Excellent job and good luck. Fingers crossed.
Oh, I feel that. Good job. Good luck. Thank you. So we'll take a motion to adjourn at 10:16?
Oh.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oops. Passes.